Good morning and welcome to the West Contra Costa Unified School District and West County League of Women Voters Candidates Forum. Today, we will experience several firsts. The first at-large trustee area elections, the first West Contra Costa Unified School District Candidates Forum on Zoom, and the first time for me as a forum moderator. I'm Linda Whitmore and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters. We have candidates running for the four trustee areas. Each candidate will have two minutes for an introduction. They'll be asked 10 questions and given one minute to respond and two minutes for a closing summary. There will be a clock on the screen to keep time that we all can see. And each candidate, we're asking you that you please be respectful of the allocated time. Tyra Wright is a member of our league and she is responsible for the Zoom attendees and panelists. The Zoom forum technical operator and timekeeper is Bobby Jordan. He's a district communications manager. Now it's time to start the first forum for trustee area one. We have two members of the League of Women Voters who will be sharing and who will be asking the questions. Naomi Williams, raise your hand Naomi. Okay, and Anne Muniz, raise your hand Anne. Okay. And we have two candidates who are running for a seat for trustee area one. Estella DePaz and Jamila Smith Folds. Now I want everyone to pay close attention to the candidates' answers because on November 3rd, you will vote for another first. You will vote for another first. You will elect the first West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Trustees for Area One. A couple more announcements before we start. This webinar is available or will be available on the district Facebook page, on the League of Women's Facebook page, and on the district's website. And throughout the webinar, we have Spanish translation. So now I think I've got all of my information given to you. We're ready to start. And I'm going to ask Naomi to start with the first question. And we begin now.
Good morning. Um, who's up? I don't see the name.
Estella DePaz and Jamila Smith Folds.
I don't see them though, that's what I'm saying. I see the clock.
That's okay.
Okay.
I thought they were doing introduction.
Get their screen, their name is at the bottom of their face.
Are they gonna do their introduction first?
Call their name, who you want to do introduction.
But I don't see the face, that's what I'm saying.
Estella DePaz, please give your introduction.
Thank you so much, everybody, for having me here today. This is really truly an honor. I'm Estella DePaz and I'm running to be the Area One Trustee for West Contra Costa Unified School District. My deep appreciation for the American public school system started in 1981. That's actually when my family decided to immigrate from the Philippines to America because my parents said, if you get your diploma in America, no one can challenge it. So as a high school student, I attended John Swett Unified and I'm very grateful, I was very grateful to actually get English as a second language classes, which helped me become more proficient in my English. More recently, as a preschooler, my eldest son here in West Contra Costa Unified was diagnosed with a learning disorder that led to an IEP, an Individualized Education Plan. We got services. We got special day classes, occupational therapy, speech, social learning. And I am completely convinced that because of those special education programs, that actually changed the trajectory of his life. Our education system is in crisis. We have a $62 million budget deficits that's been forecasted. Of course, COVID-19 has changed our daily lives and the way we are doing school. These challenges have also highlighted many social inequities that we must address and we need to overcome. Still, we have to make sure that our focus remains our students. We have to make sure that our 32,000 students get the quality education that is their right. That is a responsibility of the district. Our current board is ineffective and full of emotional decisions in their process. I bring to the table 20-plus years of focused and deliberate experience in leadership. I hold a PMP and I'm ready to lead. Thank you.
Okay, actually, that was some of the answers for the first question that I'm gonna ask you. So you have to do it all over again.
Okay. Certainly, thank you very much.
Okay.
Before you start, we need to give Jamila Smith Folds a chance for her introduction and then you start the questions. Because you're gonna do back and forth questions. So Jamila, can you have two minutes to do your introduction and then we'll start the questions?
Yes ma'am. My name is Jamila Smith Folds. I'm running for West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board Trustee, Board One. I've been in the field of education for over 15 years, from classroom teacher, parent volunteer, and community leader to school board trustee. I will work to ensure transparency and accountability to policies while ensuring programs are equitable, sustainable, and have built-in capacity for measured growth. I was born and raised in Alabama. School was the place where knowledge flowed like a river that everyone could drink from. My relationship with school led me to graduate from Auburn University, earning a double major in history and English with the credential to teach. As classroom teacher, I saw how important and intentional it was to create space for students and parents. Teaching in California and Alabama provided a clear awareness to me that my relationship with education was not everyone's experience. I know that it's not enough for schools to be a river. They have to be barrier-free and they have to have containers for everyone to use. I'm a parent volunteer and who has navigated the educational system. I know what it's like to fight for our teachers and advocate for our students on the front line. Being a boots-on-the-ground community leader means that I create and maintain relationships. I know, and I know as a school board member, I will set direction, provide support, and continue to advocate for our students. It's my authentic experience as a classroom teacher, a staunch and fierce parent volunteer and community leader, not to mention a parent of three school-aged daughters, that motivate me to create consensus on the board and push for the desired outcome for our student success. Together, we will ensure that no student remains thirsty while standing under the waterfall of education. I'm asking for the opportunity to serve. Allow me to take your voice to the board. It's time for me and for us to stop making ripples by throwing stones and to start making waves by throwing these boulders. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I'm gonna turn the questions over to our two league representatives, Naomi and Anne. And Naomi, you have the first question.
Okay. How will you address the budget issues? And this is for Estella.
Thank you so much for that, Ms. Naomi. So because of my experience as a project manager and having managed many multimillion-dollar projects, I'm very comfortable in managing and balancing budgets and working with many diverse and fully engaged, I hope, community members so that we can actually have stakeholders in front of us as we move forward in figuring out how we address the budget. I believe we need to start with process. We need to create outcomes that are going to be our clear beacon of goals in making sure that our young folks actually have their well-deserved education that we have promised them. We also owe our communities who are investing in our schools the kind of school system and education that prepares our young folks for college and career readiness. That's not happening as effectively as we want. And especially here in District One, we're seeing a lot of gaps. So those two things are the first two things that I would like to make sure we address as we move forward. Thank you.
Okay, and Jamila, how will you address the budget issues?
There are challenges to the budget, that's clear. What's not clear is how the district got here or how it will not stay here. As school board trustee, I come with a plan. My priorities are to continue to provide service for our students and families. I serve at the will of the people. It's the community, our collective community, that agrees that we must protect the integrity of the education. With the focus, with my focus, it's gonna be on the 32,197 students that we have in WCCUSD. They cannot suffer from the mis- engrossment management of the budget. The 90% of the budget that goes to people, those are my friends, my colleagues, my ex-colleagues, my neighbors. Those are the people who are dedicated their lives to serving these students. What I bring to the table is the practical, not theoretical, understanding that giving CPR to a dead situation is a waste of time. We've gotta talk to our labor and we've gotta make hard decisions and a hard conversation. And I'm the school board member that will be able to do that because I formed those relationships. Thank you.
Okay. Estella, this question is for you first. How will you address the issues around equality? Equity? Equity?
Thank you. Um, as an immigrant and a parent of a special needs student, it's important for me to make sure that we actually shine a light on all of these areas of inequity in our school system. It's been happening for a very long time and systems like our school system protect itself. They're built to do that. I believe that what we need to do is engage and fully engage our communities to make sure that the conversations that need to happen, those hard conversations, will lead to actual agreement and outcomes so that we can actually change processes and follow our heart in the way we actually want to treat each of our students in an equitable way. Right now, many of our students are not seen. Their voices are not heard. It is important for us to make sure that our teachers, our administrators, and our staff actually have the type of perspective-taking, if you will, that would make sure that each of our students are seen and are heard and are supported and loved in our school district. Thank you.
Okay. Jamila, how would you answer it? What would you, how would you address the issues of equity?
Thank you. Equity is in my bones. I taught at Gompers Continuation High School in Richmond by choice. I chose to teach there. I chose to take those kids' voices, not only to the board, but let their voices be heard in the classroom. I let them know that I choose you. As a mother with a daughter with an IEP, I know how important it is to make sure her voice is at the table. I'm an advocate. I'm an advocate for those who are historically marginalized in our school district. There's not, there's no, no longer an idea of an achievement gap. It's a chasm. So what I bring to the table is understanding how you work in the classroom. How do we get that information to all of our students? It's called scaffolding. We have to be able to hit every student at the level that they are and then be a motivator and an encourager to tell them where they need to go. I'm able to do that with the experience that I have as a teacher, as a mother, and as a motivator, as a coach. I've coached, I've been assistant coach at the middle school for years now. It takes a relationship-building model to increase equity in student achievement.
Naomi, may I ask you to direct the next question?
I am. I am.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Jamila, for the third question is, what would you do? What do you feel has been the issue around distant learning?
Thank you for that question. I think what's been the issue around distance learning is that we were in crisis learning. Since March 16th, it's been in crisis learning. The issue with distance learning is the trauma. We are sitting in trauma. These kids are sitting in trauma. And if we don't have high expectations and high support, we can't continue the learning process. What I want parents to understand, no one is asking you to be the teacher. We're asking you to be a great classroom aide. And I am built-in able to help parents with that. I'm able to take that pressure off and help them be the classroom aide that they need to be to make sure that their child is still navigating the educational system. What I do as a homeschool teacher, I am a registered homeschool teacher. I have those transferable skills to help those parents who are texting me, who are calling me, and who are emailing me. I am helping navigate them through this system. It's something that we can do, but we have to work together to do it. And that's why I put up Jamila's Teacher Tips every Monday on all of my social media to give parents a chance to take a breath, take a pause, and let's walk through, let's walk this road together.
Okay. Um, Estella, what would you do? What do you feel have been the issue around distant learning?
So I appreciate very much that we have a one-per-one way of addressing the issues, very much the way that Jamila said. But we have a systems issue and we are talking about 32,000 students with very differing experiences. What I have done is worked very closely with students of families, families of students with high needs. And those families were struggling very much, especially in March. Things are getting a little better, but what we've got is not sustainable. So we need to do really two things. The first thing is make sure that we've got the right supports in place for our teachers because their life, again, has been changed and they need to do so much more. The second thing, we need to do a better job right now with how we're engaging these young minds. Parents have told me that they're concerned that when teachers are not around, their students, in fact, are not paying attention. Though it's something that we can actually work on, especially with the Learning Continuity Plan. Thank you.
Okay. Jamila, what is your position regarding campus security?
Thank you for that question. Everyone's trying to figure out what safety really looks like. Safety is a feeling, it's not just what you see. The district has made their decision. As a teacher, I've seen the SROs in service in our, in our community and then in their capacity. But also as a teacher, I've seen my students feel differently, feel like they're treated differently. Equity matters. The district did not show that when they made this knee-jerk reaction without a plan. Never take without giving. The trust has been broken and it must be reestablished between the stakeholders. It's time to have those real hard conversations and make sure that our school and our campuses are still safe. We have to implement a safety plan. All students deserve to feel safe and parents deserve a plan and students deserve to be valued and heard. As school board trustee, I will set the direction to stop underutilizing our health department and our counselors. They are the ones that help our campuses feel safe and our students be safe. We must make our campus safe and feel safe. I'm duty-bound and determined to do the right to right this ship by creating community relationships.
Okay. Estella, what is your position regarding the campus security?
So I'm under record, ma'am, for actually saying that that decision was very myopic, so it's very short-sighted. What I have asked the board to do is to make sure that as we actually try and reopen our schools, that we have a safety plan that considers when our students are not making good decisions, for instance, when they're in crisis, that we actually have a way to support our staff and the student themselves to keep everybody safe. So that's very, very important. But above and beyond that, I believe a more systemic approach to actually addressing this is to create the ability for our schools in a community schools model, for example, to make those kinds of decisions. We have very competent, very capable administrators, staff, and teachers in each of our school sites. I think not being able to utilize them in coming up with decisions for their school and their site and their community actually is a missed opportunity. So although we are in this situation that is sad, I believe we can learn from it and we can actually take those learnings to move forward. And I'm advocating that we actually create those community schools. Thank you.
Okay. Estella, this question is for you. What should the new, what should be the new priorities for Measure R funding regarding our facilities, master plan?
So the Measure R specifically is for technology innovations and safety. It's, it's so, right now, there is conversation happening at the CBOC. But in fact, there's also other conversations that are happening here in Area One that I've started with many of our parents. And so the conversation is really around how do we go about making sure that safety and technology enhancements for our schools are actually also equitable. Of course, Measure R, one of the things that we were talking about are things like the very period-based design of windows in Richmond, the fact that there are no air conditioning systems. I've been hearing a lot of really great innovative ways of addressing those issues, but the priority, of course, needs to start with safety. That is a responsibility that we have as adults for our kids. And then we can look at other things that we can actually make sure is part of that plan. Thank you.
Okay. Pamela, Pamela, what would, what should be the first priorities for the Measure R funding regarding the facilities, master plan?
I think that the first priority is to bring everyone back to the table. COVID has allowed us a chance to pause and it's allowed us a chance to reevaluate. Now that we have the opportunity, that the kids are not in school for the foreseeable future right now, now is the time to look back at that plan and make sure that the priorities that are listed on that plan are able to be measured and implemented in this time right now. So the way that we do that is we bring labor to the table. We, we make sure that our CBOC is leading this and we make sure that we also have parents and students at that table. It's a way of interfacing to where we make sure that what happens in your community and on your campus is addressed in that master plan. We have to make sure that all of us are at the table and all of us have a chance to bring into that input what we want our schools to look like, surrounded by their facilities and surrounded by safety. What do we want it to look like? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you too. I will now turn your back over to Linda.
Thank you, Naomi. I like how you're doing two and two. Good, good job. Next will be Anne Muniz and she's gonna do our last five questions. Anne's all yours.
Yes. Yes. Good morning. I'll be asking you the next set of questions. And the first question is, what programs or resources do you think the district can put in place to handle social-emotional learning? And Estella?
So there are a number of things that we actually could already leverage. I know that talking with parents, we have some things that are already working really well around social justice, for instance. Our PBIS systems that have been adopted by many of our schools. I'm not sure if it's actually adopted across the board, but I know in District One, several of our schools are using that model. It's really helping make sure that we've got the connection with our young folks even before. So it's a very proactive solution to social justice and to actually engaging our young folks and being seen. So that's one of the things that I think we could leverage as a best practice. The second thing is, I would go back to community schools. A community school is really something where socially relevant, community-based type solution that leverages the value of the community and engages parents, teachers, staff, everybody into what we need to make sure happens in our school. That includes all the training and the learning that all of us as a group, as a community, need to do in order to support our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jamila, what programs or resources do you think the district can put in place to handle social-emotional learning?
I think the first thing that the district has to recognize is the same thing that us as parents and teachers recognize. We recognize that the kids are sitting in trauma. The whole nation, the whole globe is sitting in trauma. So what we have to do is stop, reimagine, and then put, implement programs and practices that help with that trauma healing. That's the first thing. A child cannot learn if they are preoccupied with the trauma that they're expressing in their bones. So social-emotional learning has to come from those who are already charged with and have the professionalism behind treating trauma. We have those people in our district already. We need to let them take the lead. Let their voices be the loudest one at the table. They will tell us what we need to do to help our children heal. So as your school board trustee, the biggest thing I can do is listen. I listen, then I learn, and then I'm able to lead. So I will listen to our school psychologists, I will listen to our counselors, I will listen to our climate team, I will listen to our parents, and I will listen to our students. And then we move into that healing realm. Thank you.
And Jamila, I'd like you to take the next question as well. How should the district address the issue of co-locations with charter schools?
Thank you so much. Charter schools are here. And what we have to do is learn how to be good neighbors. We have got to learn how to be good neighbors. And that means that we hold everyone accountable and everyone with open transparency. We need to make sure that all of our children, all 32,127 are served. We have to make sure that all of our students have that, are meeting the need, their needs are being met with equitable education. So cohabitation of a campus requires being able to have and make and maintain relationships. You have to be able to talk to each other for the best interest of the children. The children are at the center of every decision that we make. And that means whether we're public school or charter school, we have to keep the children at the center. And we have to have some hard conversations and we have to make some strong decisions. It is not, I'm a public school teacher and I'm a public school advocate, but I'm also with the clear understanding that we have to have a good neighbor policy.
Thank you. Estella, the same question. How would you, how would the district, how should the district address the issue of co-locations with charter schools?
So charter schools, public charter schools are here to stay, as Jamila said. Recently though, the CTA, the California Teachers Association, actually came up with a, I guess I would say, a restated position on charter schools. So especially because of the four new laws, bills, that our state has actually enacted, what it does is it actually provides our school district and, you know, me as the board trustee, more areas of actually looking for accountability, accountability for their, the outcomes that they deliver, the learning that we are actually getting for our students, together with how they treat their staff. Because there's also a lot of public charter schools whose staff is actually getting into unions at this point. So I believe we start with accountability. We also move into partnership, but it always goes back to the data that we need to make sure we're relying on. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next question is, how will you address the digital divide in our district? Estella, you can take this question as well.
Thank you, ma'am. So the digital divide project, I've actually been hearing a lot about this and it's not just, you know, specific to our district, of course. It's been something that is a challenge, especially in areas where there are a lot of issues around poverty and around inequity. So I actually look at the digital divide project that's being proposed in the district right now as an equity issue. If you're actually looking at our map of who does not have access for distance learning, you would see a lot of concentration in the southern part of our district. That clearly is one of those things that we need to make sure we're using with an equity lens. And perhaps some of the things that are happening right now with our CBOC and our master plan is looking at that as well. It's one of those things that I believe, because we are charged with making sure that these young minds are getting the education that is their right, we need to address those issues and create a way for us to come up with solutions that work best. Right now, I applaud our technology department for coming up with some great solutions, but those need to become more permanent than what we've got at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jamila, the same question for you. How will you address the digital divide in our district?
That's a good question. The digital divide is not just about equality, it's equity. We're a one-to-one district. So everyone has a tablet, but if you have it and you can't access it because you don't have access to the internet or you don't have the people at home who are able to help you troubleshoot, then that becomes an equity issue. So what I want to make sure that is understood is equality and equity are two different things. It's called a divide for a reason. The division comes from the equity issue. Are all kids able to access the same materials that are given to every student in the district? For us to understand that, we have to ask the question. We have to get down and drill down and ask the question. Do you know how to turn your tablet on? Do you have someone there who could help you? Do you know how to troubleshoot? As grown-ups, we're having to do that. We're having to teach each other. We're having to rely on those people who know more than us, those young people that know more than us. It's time for us to take the people who know the most and put them in positions of leadership. It's time to take the people who know the most and can help solve the problems and let their voices be the loudest one at the table. As school board trustee, that's what I would do. I'm humble enough to say, "Help me so I can help you."
Thank you. Estella, what is your position regarding approving more charter schools in our district?
Oh. So this is really a complicated question for me. I've talked to many, many parents about this. And as, as a parent... as, as a parent of a student with special needs, I know what it means for parents to try and navigate a system that's not meant to serve you. Because you are on the margins, the fighting, the negotiating, the pushing that you're in the struggle that you just need to do in order to actually get the education that is yours, your, your student, your, your child's right, is really um, a, a challenge. And so therefore, my, 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 my take on charter schools is that we need to have a conversation. If, for example, a number of parents have come together and are dedicated and are fully committed to the long haul that they would need to put in place in order to have the programs and the services that is for their students, I think we need to acknowledge that, and I think we need to listen. I am not comfortable and I will not take on saying no to something like that for our community. Thank you.
And the same question for you, Jamila. What is your position regarding approving more charter schools in our district?
No. That's, that's a simple question, but I can give you the longer version. The longer version is I want to stop the bleeding of the impact to our budget that charter schools have. Right now, we're not, right now, before you approve a charter school, you have the right to look at the impact that it would have on your district budget. The impact on our district budget would be detrimental and continue to be detrimental. However, I am not arrogant enough to tell a parent where they should send their child, but I'm smart enough to ask, "Why are you sending them there?" And then I'm gonna listen and bring that back here, because I want every parent that had the opportunity to take their child to a charter school to have that in place at a public school. So you took them there for safety? Let me make sure we have safety here. You took them there for extra programs? I got those programs over here. That's what I would do with a charter school question. I will ask those parents, "Why?", and then I will put that answer into our public schools.
Thank you. And this is the last question, and it's rather lengthy, so I can read it more than once if you like. Uh, Stella will go first, and the question is, "The West County Mandarin School serves students from across the district. The school has outgrown its current site at the Sarah, at the Sarah campus in Richmond and is slated to move to the temporary portable campus at Portella in El Cerrito. Families have requested that we move instead to the abandoned Adams, which is blocks away from Sarah, and put portables there. Would you support the financial investment to have the school move to Adams? Why or why not? Stella?"
I think that we have to be really careful about that question because Adams actually was condemned uh, many years ago because of seismic issues. So um, I actually have had conversations with folks from um, the Mandarin School about this as well, and was involved in a number of conversations, and there was actually a board proposal about this too. So I believe that the more prudent step is to actually allow the, um, the Mandarin um, school families to move to Portella, because moving them in Adams, when we know that this is actually an earthquake area, and that particular site is sitting on a fault line, is too much of a risk for us to take. I, I, I know the convenience, and I know that it's easier for them because they're right across the street from Sarah to Adams. It's only a couple of blocks. It really makes sense. But I, I think what would make more sense is that we actually move them to Portella for now, similar to what we did with Wilson, by the way. The Wilson School also got moved in order to make sure that we actually have the place for them to, to thrive and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jamila, I'll repeat the question. "The West County Mandarin School serves students from across the district. The school has outgrown its current site at the Sarah campus in Richmond and is slated to move to the temporary portable campus at Portella in El Cerrito. Families have requested that we move instead to the abandoned Adams, which is blocks away from Sarah, and put portables there. Would you support the financial investment to have the school move to Adams? Why or why not?"
As school board trustee, I'm one of five votes. So what I understand is that I need to be able to listen at a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree level about everything. But for me, safety is paramount. I have to be able to cast my vote for the safety of the children. But what I also have to be able to do is have policies and programs in place to help the families. So if there's an issue with getting to another campus, I want to work to solve that issue. I want to make sure that you have the ability. There's childcare there. There's transportation issues. That we are all working together to make sure that your child is not only educated, but they're educated in a safe environment. That's part of equity and that's part of sustainability. So again, as your school board trustee, I listen. I understand what the families are saying, and I can, with strong leadership, tell you, "I hear you. I understand you. I may not agree with you, but your children will remain safe under my leadership." And then I will help you solve the problems, that inconvenience that may occur from that safety issue. But your babies are gonna be safe under me.
Thank you. And that concludes the questions.
Right. Thank you, Anne. And I want to thank our candidates for, um, my goodness, your response is right to our time that we allocated. I appreciate that. You guys got a lot of information in in that little bit of time we gave you. So thank you very much. We did get a couple of questions from the chat, but we, um, decided, the league and the district, we decided earlier that we were only gonna, uh, have questions that we received in advance. We were not gonna use any questions from the chat because we were trying to get all of our forums, which is one hour. This is our, um, we only have two candidates this one. We want to make sure that all the candidates, we have more in the other, um, area trustee areas. Um, that we all had a chance to do ten questions. If we add questions now, it won't work for our other forums, other, you know, hours we're doing. So we can't do that this one. So I, I want the, the attendees to understand. Thank you for your questions in the chat, but we cannot do any questions from the chat today for our forums. I want to thank again our two candidates, um, Stella Depas and Jamila Smith Folds. I also want to thank Naomi and Anne for assisting with, um, Area One candidates. And now you have to get ready for your next forum, which is gonna be Area Two. And so while we set up for the trustee Area Two, um, we're gonna show a short video prepared by the Contra Costa County Election Division. This video should, no, 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 this video will answer all of your questions about our voting ballots and how to ensure that your vote is counted. So I hope you guys all pay close attention to these two candidates, because on November third, like I said, you will vote for another first. You will elect the first West Contra Costa County Unified Schools Board of Trustees for Area One. And by listening to these two, you're gonna have a, a hard decision. So good luck, ladies. Oh, we're supposed to do their summaries. We didn't do their summary.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry. I told you I was first moderator, first time moderating. So we still need to have, uh, Jamila and, um, Stella back on, please, as panelists. You're still there, okay. Stella?
Hold on, Ms. Whitmore. I think we lost Stella and Jamila, so hang on.
I apologize.
Jamila's still on.
Yeah, Jamila is. We want to get, there's Stella. Okay.
Yes, Stella.
Okay. I made my, I made my first and only mistake for today.
You're doing great, ma'am.
I hope. So let's have, uh, Jamila, since I, I called your name, give your two-minute summary.
Yes, ma'am, and I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to make sure we got this part in also.
Oh, yes. Thank you for, yeah, thank you.
No worries. Once again, my name is Jamila Smith Folds. I have been in this for over fifteen years. I'm a server. It's who I am and it's what I do. I will take your voice to the board. I hold the number one value every teacher should have. I'm teachable. I am humbly asking for voters to vote me in for change. This is a movement, not a moment. I bring with me classroom experience, parent navigational skills, and community-centered mindset. When you get me, you get the good trouble. When my mouth opens, you get to hear your voice. I am passionate about you and your children. You have enough to worry about as a parent, a teacher, a student, and a community member. My shoulders are broad and my commitment is documented. Let me lighten your load. Your seat at the table is ready for you, but if you can't be there every time, if you can't pick up the phone every time the district calls, if you can't show up every time you're asked, no, I'll be there for you. I will be there for you, and I will be there because of you. I want to take just one minute to thank all of those who have endorsed me and supported my journey as, for your school board trustee. Thank you to my current and to my former teachers and staff at WCCUSD. Thank you to the UTR, to the Teamsters eight fifty-six, to the IBEW, to the Contra Costa Label Council, to the Building Trade, the Young Dems, the West Dems, the Democratic Party of Contra Costa, the DPPCCC, and the California Democratic Party and Pino for Fair Government. Thank you for the trust. Thank you Supervisor Federal Glover. Thank you School Board Trustee Mr. Phillips. Thank you Mayor Tom Butt, Pino City Council members, and the City Council member in Hercules. Thank you for the trust. I want to stand on those shoulders at the school board. I want to make sure that I'm taking everybody's voice to the board, the historically marginalized, uh, the historically marginalized student population, and the parents and the family in the community. So please, by November the third, vote Jamila Smith Folds for School Board Trustee Area One. Thank you. And I'm sorry if I went over, Ms. Linda. I did not see the clock, so I just went on and took advantage of it.
Well, no, I didn't see the clock either, so but thank you. So now we're gonna have, uh, Stella, uh, for your summary.
Thank you, Ms. Linda. I'm a local. I grew up in the Hercules and Pinal community. I've seen this community become what it is. I want to be, uh, I want us to be in this journey together. Uh, my promise to you, our community, is that we will, I will continue to share information that I continue to get as a candidate. I will post them on Estella for Education Facebook. I already have a Nextdoor page called WCCSD Budget Accountability Forum. Rather lengthy, I know, but you'll find it in West, uh, at the Nextdoor, I hope. And I also send out regular updates on things that I'm learning about being a candidate, about our district, because it is a big district, and there are varying and differing types of needs from what's happening in the southern part of our district and what's happening in our northern part of our district. I'm asking for you to engage with me in this journey. I want us to learn together because we have a lot of challenges ahead of us, and having those contacts, that relationship, and that trust is very, very important for me. We have thirty-two thousand young people whose education is on the line. One of them is my son, who's actually a senior this year. I think Area One needs a representative who can hit the ground running, and with my previous experience as a leader, an organizational leader on the business side, both in informational systems and in technology services, I can actually, and have the, the skills and the capability to fix many of these issues. We have a lot of them. We need a steady, experienced hand to lead us through the balancing of the budget, communicating, communicating to all stakeholders, managing risks that are in front of us. What we need is a well-thought-out and decisive choice. I have the organizational skills and the leadership experience. I believe I'm the candidate that can effectively represent Area One. Thank you very much for listening to me, and I hope I've earned your trust. Please look for Estella Depas in the November ballot. Thank you. Salamat.
Thank you very much. And now I think I'm on the right track. Okay. Well, I thank both of you again. Okay, well, we're, um, and good luck with your candidacy. We are, uh, moving on. We have a short video which I explained to you. I'm not sure. I'm looking at the chat. Uh, Robert said we're having a little technical difficulty, so it's not just me. Um, so I'm waiting to see. He's gonna try. So we're gonna put our video up and prepare for our next forum. What our attendees to, uh, thank you again for, for tuning in for our first forum for area, trustee Area One, and we'll be starting our trustee Area Two at eleven o'clock, but we have a video right now to show. Okay, thank you very much.
Can you hear me, Linda?
Yes. But the attendees can too, so call me on my phone.
Okay. Oh, oh, I can't. You mess up my questions. I'll talk to you later.
Can you go on the chat and send to me?
Oh, on the chat?
Do a private chat to me? Bobby, I'm not sure if you can hear me. There's no sound on my end.
Or my end either.
Or me either.
I see the video, but it's no sound.
Yeah. Yeah. I see you there, Linda. I saw you over there. Oh, man. Okay. Can you hear me? I don't see the video though.
Even what we do, and we're committed to, to, uh, serving democracy and the voters in, in our county. And I think it's really important for Contra Costa County voters to know that we really do have America's best election team. And as we talk through some of the preparations and plans that we have, I think you'll, you'll understand why I feel so confident in, in saying that. Next slide. And we have an award-winning team here, national, uh, nationally recognized for, for our excellence. Uh, next slide. It always takes a, a lot of work and effort to prepare for a presidential, uh, election. And we've known for years that this is gonna be a historic election. Uh, and, uh, we started planning, uh, over a year ago. So last summer, as we sat down and we started doing our plans, we focused on cybersecurity, uh, and, uh, wildfires as being two challenges that we needed to be planning for and planning around as we went into, as, as we made our plans for the November election. And as we went into the fall, all of a sudden, we, we found a new challenge, uh, that cropped up is when we started having the power shut, public safety power shutdowns. So we, it started to incorporate, uh, contingency plans for those things as well. Uh, and, and then as we were coming down the homestretch, uh, for the March primary election, uh, we had the sudden departure of, of, of our clerk. Uh, but things never missed a beat. The, the, the Elections Division kept firing on all cylinders, and we rolled out into March's primary election with, uh, a, a great plan and, and actually a great election. But just as we were starting to vote, uh, in that election, we had the coronavirus pandemic, uh, hit us and be declared. And we worked through that, uh, and, and completed the canvas of the March election, uh, while the shelter-at-home orders were, were issued. Uh, and we were able to complete our work in, uh, anyway, and since that time, we've been working from home. The, the entire Elections Division's been working at home for months, and we're going to be, uh, bringing, uh, our full cohort of folks back into the office starting next week, so we can, uh, continue to prepare for the November election. And as we continue to make our plans and, and refine our plans, we, we found that we continue to have new challenges that we need to take into account. We have the economic shutdown. We have social unrest. And most recently, we've had the politicization of the USPS. It makes us wonder, okay, what else is gonna happen? Uh, the doctor talked about the flu, uh, coming back in the fall, and there are reports that, uh, that, uh, certain political parties might have law enforcement, uh, patrolling, uh, polls on election day to secure the vote. So, uh, next slide. So we've taken all those things into account, and, uh, we've put together, uh, our plan for the election. And what, what has changed? We get asked that all the time. What has changed? And for most voters, there's not gonna be, uh, any visible changes. Seventy-five percent of our voters already have requested their ballot by mail, and they get it and they voted, and everything's gonna look almost identical to none. There's another twenty-five percent who are gonna be mailed a ballot for the very first time. There's another 25% who are going to be mailed a ballot for the very first time, which is about 160,000 voters. For them, it's going to look a little bit different. And as we've refined our plans to accommodate all these challenges, we found that we only need to expand our existing programs. We had, we started our Dropbox program back in 2014. And we had Vote Center slash Early Voting since 2016. So basically, we've modified and just scaled what we're already doing. So most of those changes are, will really be behind the scenes and not really visible to most people. Next slide. So I'm going to talk about some of the things that we've done to enhance our vote-by-mail processes and plans, to expand our Dropbox program, to expand early voting, and how we're maintaining our Election Day polling places. And touch briefly on some of the PPE and distancing protocols and countermeasures that we're putting in place. But before I talk in detail about those, next slide. We're asked all the time, what are the timelines, when are the ballots going out? So just briefly, on September 24th, our voter information guide is scheduled to be mailed to all voters in the county. And October 5th or earlier, we will mail all the ballots out to voters. And in-person voting will begin in Martinez. We've moved it outside of our office to the former Moose Lodge, or it's now a cornerstone church right across the street from our office. So we can have social distancing and health protocols in place. We will open all of our ballot drop boxes as of that day, and we'll begin receiving ballots. So on October 29th, we will have 16 early voting sites open up. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And on November 3rd, Election Day, we will have our full complement of polling places. That's also the postmark deadline for people who are returning their ballots by mail. And one of the changes made by the governor and the legislature in response to the current pandemic is that they will allow us to accept and count ballots received by November 20th, provided that they have been postmarked on or before Election Day. Next slide. Some of the things we've done for vote-by-mail. As we've upgraded our USPS accounts to speed delivery and enable ballot tracking. We've expanded the use of first-class mail. Typically, we mail because of the large number of ballots that we mail. We mail them at a bulk rate. We will mail the first major mailing will be at the bulk rate. But after that, with it, starting at 30 days prior to the election, all ballots mailed out will be sent out first class. We have included iVoted stickers, oops, please go back. We've included iVoted stickers for the first time in the ballots. That one incentive that people have of going to the polls or showing up in person, we've tried to accommodate by giving people their iVoted sticker right away. We did an outreach to that 160,000 non-vote-by-mail voters that I mentioned earlier, for whom this is going to be new. We mailed to them, explained what the process is, explained that they're going to get a ballot in the mail, and offered them an opportunity to update the signature that we have on file for them so we can ensure that we count their ballot when they return their ballot. And to date, we've had over 40,000 of those cards returned, updating their signatures, which is a 25% return rate, which is astronomical compared to the normal return rate we get when we talk to voters. So people are taking this seriously, and people are very focused on making sure they're prepared to have their vote counted. We're planning on getting our ballots in the mail as soon as they are ready. The etched-in-stone mailing date is October 5th, but we're going to try to get them into the mail stream a week earlier just to mitigate any delays in delivery of the mail. Now, we're also advising voters that if they have not received their ballot by the 19th of October, they should contact our office by phone or by email, and we will reissue them a ballot and send them another ballot. But we need to give a little bit of transit time for the ballots to get into the hands of voters. But by the 19th, or even by the 15th, if voters don't have it, they need to let us know. Also, we are participating with the state in a program called Ballot Trax that voters can sign up for. It's a program they have to opt into. If they do, they will receive emails and text notifications of the status of their ballot at each step of the way, from the time it's mailed to them to the time we receive it and we count it. So that's a new program. Details of all these things will be included in the voter information guide that is going out to voters. Okay, next slide.
Okay, we're going to stop our slides right now because we really have to get ready for the next forum, which is area trustee Area 2. And I want to make sure we have all of our candidates here who are running for trustee for that area. So I'm waiting to hear from Tyra, if they're all here. So I'm looking at the chat that we're, well, while we're waiting for Tyra to let me know if they're all here, I do want to make an announcement to the attendees. In our first forum, we had several people who wanted to ask questions from our chat. And we had made a decision, the League of Women Voters in the District, that we were going to try to get our questions in advance. And that was part of a publication that went out, publicity about this forum, that we were accepting questions in advance, which we did up until Friday, yesterday at 12 noon. And then we got together and put the 10 questions together that you're going to, you heard the first forum, and you will hear this next forum. We can't add more questions because we figured out our forums, the one-hour forum that fit all the candidates. So they all had the same amount of time to answer. And if we, even though we had only two for the first forum, we have three for the next one. And if we add questions, they won't have the, they won't have time to do the 10. So we're sticking to our 10. I apologize that we're not able to do any questions from the chat. Tyra, do we have our three candidates here? Can you let me know? Okay, they're all here. And Robert, are they all on? Did I see one and see Guadalupe? And is all three here? I don't, I see his name. And Audra? I don't see Audra yet. Is she on the screen? I don't see a visual. There she is. Nope, that's Audrey Shields. I need to see Audra Goldie Williams. So I don't see, Tyra, can you let me know, is Audra Goldie Williams, is she on? I see Audrey Shields, I don't see Goldie Williams. Is she, Audra, are you on Audrey Shields Zoom?
Linda, I don't see her name, I'm looking.
Okay. That's why I'm asking if Audrey Shields, is Audra, are you using Audrey Shields Zoom?
No, no, she is not.
Okay. Well, I'm going to start my, do the introduction because we're running, our time is set. And I hope Audra will come in in time for the information. I'd like to give a few more minutes, but I don't want to interfere with the amount of time that the candidates had to answer their questions. So Tyra, when she comes on, please put her in as a panelist, okay? Okay, let's see what time we have, make sure we have time. Yep, we have to start. Tyra, one more time, do you see Audra Goldie Williams?
No, I don't.
Okay. Well, we're going to start, and hopefully she will be able to arrive on time to do her, to be part of our question and answers. Okay, so I'm going to start. Good morning and welcome to the West Contra Costa Unified School District and the West County League of Women Voters Candidates Forum. Today, we will experience several firsts. The first at-large to trustee area elections. The first West Contra Costa Unified School District Candidates Forum on Zoom. And the first time for me as a forum moderator. I am Linda Whitmore, and I am a member of the League of Women Voters. We have candidates running for the four trustee areas. Each candidate will have two minutes for an introduction. And they'll be asked 10 questions and given one minute to respond. They will also be given two minutes for a closing summary. There will be a clock on the screen, and I'd like to mention about that clock. We had, Robert's trying to make our clock smaller this time, hopefully it works out. So we have more of our candidates showing and less of a clock showing. So he's working on that right now. But we will have a clock on the screen to keep time. And the candidates will be able to see the clock. So we're asking you to please, please respect the time allocated. Tyra Wright is a member of our league, and she is responsible for the Zoom attendees and the panelists. The Zoom forum technical operator and timekeeper is Bobby Jordan. He's a district communications manager. Now it's time to start the first forum for trustee Area 2. We have two members of the League of Women Voters who will be asking the questions. Naomi Williams, can you raise your hand? And Anne Muniz, Anne? There she is. The candidates are, when I call your name, just raise your hand right now, okay? For all three, Christian? There he is. Guadalupe, Anyana? And Audra Goldie Williams. And I don't see her, hopefully she'll come in on time. Okay. I'd like to mention that before we start, that this webinar will be available on the district Facebook, on the League of Women Voters Facebook page, and on the district website. There's also a Spanish translation is available during the webinar. I want everyone to pay close attention to the candidate answers because on November 3rd, you will vote for the another first. You will elect the first West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Trustees for Area 2. So now we're going to begin, and I'm going to turn the webinar over to Naomi and to Anne. We're beginning now. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anne Munoz. And I think we're going to start with an introduction, a two-minute introduction of each of the candidates. And the first candidate is all three, Christian. Would you give a two-minute introduction, all three?
Can you hear me?
No. And see you.
Okay. Good morning.
All three, I'm going to stop for a minute. Can you see the clock? It's important you see it for time.
No, I don't see the clock.
Okay, we got to hold for a second. Robert, they cannot see the clock. Okay, can you see it now?
No. Loading it up, I think.
Naomi, wait a minute. Okay, there we go. So all three?
I see it.
Okay, now we got you and the clock on. It's all yours.
All right. Good morning. My name is all three, Christian. And I am running for the West Contra Costa Unified School District Government Board, Area 2. I'm running because I care about our children and I want them to succeed. I graduated from Genovah Kennedy High School. I earned my BA degree in administration of justice from Howard University. And my BS degree in Bible religious education from Southwestern Christian College. For the past 15 years, I have served as the lead school captain's safety officer at El Cerrito High School. Prior to that, I was a case manager for disadvantaged youth. Prior to that, I was an intake officer at the juvenile hall. I am the past president of the Iron Triangle Neighborhood Council and the Richmond NAACP. I have spent my career protecting children, safe schools, allowing children to look forward, to look forward. And when children do not feel safe at school, they do not learn. And sometimes, they stop attending school. Not only must we protect students from physical and emotional harm, we must protect them from biological threats like COVID-19. As adults, our job is to create safe space for our children to explore and learn and grow. As your school board member trustee, I will promote policies that protect our children safe while removing barriers of learning. I will work in partnership with our entire school community to give our children the tools they need to reach their full potential. We would do this by centering our budget and work around learning, including entrepreneurship, career, and technical education, because every child deserves an opportunity to succeed. My priorities are safe schools, centering the budget around student success, and retaining and hiring the best staff for WCCUSD. Once again, my name is all three, Christian, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you, all three. And the next person for a two-minute introduction will be Guadalupe Anyana. Ms. Anyana, are you there?
Hello?
Okay.
Okay, I think she's changing because of her sound. She's getting another.
Okay.
Okay, I just saw her go leave the screen. While we're waiting for, although she's back on, but we cannot hear her. Okay, Guadalupe, will you, Guadalupe, will you speak? She's not being heard. Okay, Robert, can you assist in any kind of way? I don't know.
Guadalupe, can you hear us?
Why don't you nod your head or raise? Can you hear us? Raise your hand, can you hear us?
Do you want to call in? Oh, yes, I will. I'll put it in it.
Why don't, can she log out and log back in? I might, sometimes it works when you log out and come back in. To kind of connection is better. Guadalupe, why don't you log out and then come back in? Let's see if that works before we go on the phone. And while we're waiting, Tyra, one more time, just checking, did Audra, has she connected?
Hi.
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, she's there. I can try and see if Guadalupe is reconnecting.
Oh, I see Goldie, I see her name now.
Yeah.
So why don't we have Goldie do her two-minute introduction? And then we'll go back to Guadalupe. So Anne?
Ms. Williams, would you please give your two-minute introduction and state a little bit about yourself?
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, can't see you, we can hear you.
Oh, you can't see me, give me one second. Let me just, hold on, let me, give me one second. Oh, you can't see me, give me one second, let me just, hold on, let me, give me one second. Are you able to see me now?
Yes, we see you now.
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, everyone, I just wanna take the time to thank you for having me. My name is Audra Goldie Williams. I am the co-chair of The Asset, a volunteer parent group in WCCUSD. We fought to get a resolution by the school board for our African-American and black students and we won. Then we did a review and discovered that instead of $750,000 that was assigned to our children, they were actually entitled to over 7.2 million. So we went back to the board to fight again and we won. And to date, $3.2 million has been assigned to the resolution. I own an HR consulting firm and we specialize in DEI, diversity, equity and inclusion. I will bring this work to our district on the school board as well as my over 30 years of HR experience. I've been fighting for our children from the outside. Now, all of our children need me to fight from the inside. I've spent the last 14 years serving our children, our teachers, our families in various volunteer capacities within the district and the community. As ASAT co-chair on SEC several times, on PTAs, children's pastor, high school cheerleading coach, and I own and run a youth mentor program called Got Goals, which I'm in partnership with Girls Inc. Change is not coming, change is here. I am that change. I've been in this district for 14 years. If you look at my resume, I've always been in the community and working with our youth, not for a political career, but because that's where my heart is. I'm here, I'm ready to fight, I'm ready to represent all of our children and I'm ready to make change. Our children are not performing like they should. Our district is not performing like it should. So anybody that doesn't state that we need to make change, I don't know what they're looking at. But from what I'm looking at, change is needed, change is here and I'm that change.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now is Guadalupe Anyana, is she, are you there, Guadalupe?
I don't see her name on the screen. Um, Robert?
Yeah, I see her, we still can't hear her.
Okay, well, we're going to start and I apologize, but I don't know, if we wait, we might not have enough time for all the questions.
Okay. Is, is Guadalupe there though? Is she, is she there?
She's here, wait a minute, I think it says connecting audio now.
Hello?
Okay.
Now we can hear you.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Okay. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I, I apologize to you all. Well, good morning, everyone, my name is Guadalupe Anyana and I am running for the WCCUSD Board of Education. I've been a lifelong Richmond resident and mom of four. I have been a student at West Contra Costa, former Richmond Unified. My experiences as a student and a parent have been a big part of my commitment to this district. I have rooted in this community and have shown that throughout my commitment, participation and many years of volunteering in many different sectors in and outside of the schools. Currently, I am the chair of the Richmond Children and Youth Oversight Board for the City of Richmond and the vice chair of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, the CBLC for West Contra Costa. I also sit on the DL cap and MDAC. My parents, my plans after being elected in November are to have clarity and transparency around the budget in understandable terms and numbers so that the critical decisions that need to be made can be done with real accountability and understanding. Evaluating the distance learning program at a school-by-school basis, data that can be then used to address the supports needed. Also focusing in on community schools model at its intended potential with all stakeholders at the table to envision the difference of the neighborhood school. Making it a hub, not just for education, but for family and community support that addresses the needs of a whole child. I have been endorsed by the Contra Costa Young Democrats, Richmond City Councilman Melvin Willis, John Maverick and Eduardo Martinez, San Pablo Mayor Arturo Cruz, the Iron Triangle President Oscar Garcia, the 23th Street Merchants Association and community leaders like Rodney Alamo Brown, founder of Soho Softball Sunday, and Antonio Ramirez, founder of the Moving Forward for Our Future. I thank you guys for your invitation to participate and want you to know that this November, go out, you know, hear us out, hear the parent voice on the board and do, do your due diligence and vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now I'm going to begin the set of questions that we'll be asking. And the first question is, how will you address the budget issues? And this question is first for you, Othuri.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right. First of all, let me just by saying that our present budget right now is $363 million. And right now, we're over budget. Where in this year that we're registering at $379 million. And so right now, we are in a major crisis. Cuts have been made already and also we are faced with major issues that's coming up. So when the new war take place, we have to be ready to go and figure out how we're gonna resolve these issues and how we're gonna deal with the current cuss that's gonna be coming and it's coming. And so we're faced with a crisis. And so as board members, the new incoming board member, we wanna make sure that we do the right job on what areas and what else need to bring our budget down that we will be able to be in the means of getting this district back in order. So we have a lot to do. So you need somebody that's gonna get in there and get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Guadalupe, how would you answer the question? How will you address the budget issues? Can you hear me?
Hello, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yes.
I'm sorry. To adjust the budget, I think we need to look at the budget and translate it into terms that can be understood, not just by the trustees, but by, but all stakeholders. So that we can move forward with transparency and accountability. You know, the biggest problem that we have right now is not knowing the exact numbers and where they're being put into. So I think really focusing in on the actual budget. The past budget that was passed won't, you know, be accurate, you know, this year just because of COVID. You know, we're getting other funding, our COLA funding has been cut. So really figuring out, you know, where we're at, you know, what do we need to do, where do we wanna be and how do we get there with the financial, in, in the financial restraints that we have. So like I said, figuring out what the budget is and translating it so that all stakeholders can be at the table when decisions are being made. I think it's a time to listen and really address the issues systematically and, you know, as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Audra, how would you answer the same question? How will you address the budget issues?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you very much. There's a lot of things that we need to do. I would hold the superintendent accountable and his staff for producing accurate and timely reports. We would need to discuss how every dollar impacts students. I would support programs like e-collect to monitor annual measurable outcomes. I would explore options such as external auditing. I think community input and transparency are key. We need to be accountable to our community members. We need to measure and manage outcomes. The budget deficit from locals as well as COVID challenges. Funds need to be managed properly. I think that community impact is really important and we should consider things like multiple language forums so that all community members are clear what's going on. We need to make the budget simple, we need to present it in a simple way so that the community can participate. Partnership will be key and we need to listen. It's not one person figuring it out, it's us doing it collectively.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next question is, how will you, how will you address issues around equity? And I'm gonna start with Audra.
Thank you very much for that. My company is an HR consulting group and what we do is diversity, equity and inclusion work. So in our district currently, there's not equity. So the reality is, some of the things that we're doing on ASAT is we're intentionally going out and looking for providers to specifically address our underserved communities, our underserved students. So one of the things that we talk about, what I say all the time, is equity in action is a lifestyle. So to achieve equity, it's not a thing that you acquire, it's something that you actually embody. So we would have to be dedicated as a district to decide we're going to impact. And people say dismantle systems of oppression, dismantle systems of racism. The reality is, that's actually accurate. Systems that are currently in place are not working and those systems don't have equity. So that means that we have to find systems that work, that provide and bring equity. Everyone's gonna have to roll up our sleeves, we're gonna have to dig in, we're gonna have to make a life choice to change the way that we do things that we've always done. For equity to show up from top down, down up, everyone has to dig in and everyone has to be able to come to the plate to make our, our district equitable to all of our students.
Thank you. And Guadalupe, how would you address equity? Issues around equity?
Well, to me, equity comes from a place where we're making sure that we're just not giving the students what they need, but the supports to achieve the goals that we're setting for them. That's why my proposal for community schools is essential. Looking at what needs our schools have, how can we support those needs? And how could we build partnerships to support the achievement of our students? It's really essential that we focus in on our lower-performing schools, making sure that they have the resources there and available, not just there. So sometimes the resources are there but not available and that we have systems in place to be able to see what's functioning and what's not functioning. We, we spend a lot of time in figuring out, you know, where we're putting our money. We start a lot of programs, you know, we invest a lot, but then we don't follow through. So I think it's time that we have, we overlook and we actually sit down and have conversations with data that says, you know, this is working for our students, this is not working. And, you know, really figuring out what things are gonna cost us, what can we afford and what our goals are for the district.
Thank you. Othuri, same question. How will you address issues around equity?
Yes, I can speak firsthand experience. Working at Elserita High School, been there for 15 years, working day in and day out and I see how, how our kids are treated when they come in from the flatlands, such as come from Crescent Park or come from very other parts of Richmond. And when they come to Elserita High School, they always say, Christian, you know, we don't feel, you know, like we wanted here or being brought into the family or making things across the board equally and making everybody feeling good. So like when kids come from low-income areas or going to Elserita High School and maybe going to Pinole or so, so forth. But the thing is, is that our district, we have to work hard on making sure equity is across the board and that every staff, every teacher, everybody is on the same page to make sure that our kids are feeling safe and making sure our kids are loved on each and every single day because we have to build the minds of all backgrounds, from all nationalities. We have to do the job of making things better. So I'm, as a board trustee, I would do that. I'm there, I see the reality of things, I see everyday reality. I see it and I'm gonna fight hard. I'm in the midst, I'm in the midst of the trenches and I see it and I wanna fight for our young people and making sure that everything that our young people is gonna have. So my job is to make it happen. And along with the board and working together as a team, we can do this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. The next question is, what do you feel have been the issues around distance learning? And I'll ask Othuri again.
Yes, distance learning. Due to the COVID-19 that we're in and due to the situation that we're facing that we never experienced before, we are in a major crisis throughout this nation. And so we, if we allow our students to come back to the school at this moment without a vaccine, without things that, we don't have stuff in, in position to help our kid, we don't want nobody to get sick and die on us or this, this to be taken home. So distance learning, we're gonna have to be in it. So what we're gonna have to do is improve in this distance learning until we come out of this crisis, until we can get back into our school buildings. But at this moment, we gotta make sure that every kid has a tablet, making sure every kid has all the resources, the internet, making sure that the low-income families are being supported, making sure that we are connecting with them day in and day out. We have a job at hand. So that's my job as a trustee for Area Two, to make that happen.
Thank you very much. Guadalupe, how do you feel? What, what, what do you feel have been the issues around distance learning?
To me, the biggest problem has been the communication and lack of support to our most needed. We assume that all parents are tech savvy and can support the needs of their students, that they can and communicate with teachers and staff. There's a language barrier. How can we support and how can we expect our children to get educated if we're not giving not just the students, but, you know, the families the support that they need to be able to achieve the goals that we as a district are setting? You know, we are the ones that are setting these goals, we are the ones that are putting the standards. But we also have to form partnerships and communicate that to the families, to the, you know, to the caretakers of the students that we're trying to educate. You know, it's been really challenging, like I said, to many parents, especially working parents, to be able to facilitate, you know, me as a parent, you know, I'm, I'm a stay-at-home mom and it's been really difficult. And I've been sitting with my children in and out every day, making sure they're signing on, making sure they understand, making sure that they get over, you know, their, their every day. So I cannot, you know, I can't not imagine what other parents are going through. So I think, you know, we have a lot of communicating to do, not just for those that are tech savvy, but the ones that we haven't been able to reach. You know, right now, we have 500 students, around 500 students that are unaccountable, unaccounted to, especially in kindergarten. So how could we figure out where these students are, you know, what the biggest needs are? And how can we communicate that to the people that we're expecting to support us and support, support the education of our children along the way?
Thank you. And Audra, same question for you. What do you feel have been the issues around distance learning?
Thank you for that. I can speak personally and from what I'm hearing from other parents and caregivers, my team and community, our kids are getting more live instruction and support than they were in the spring. However, there's still lots of issues and concerns that they're facing. A lot of families still are not connected. That's key. If a child is not connected, there's no way that they're gonna be able to learn. Just as Guadalupe said, if the parents are not connected, there's no way the kids are connected. Currently, I have my eyes on kids with special needs, English learners and kids transitioning to new schools. And I'm talking about new kindergartners, new middle school, new high school, incoming freshmen. And also there's students that are transferring from other schools that are brand new to our district. I think personally that we need to support our students' mental health resources immediately. And this is not someday soon, immediately. I have a cheer team and of my 30 children that are on that team, I'm listening to the things that they're saying. And what I'm hearing from them, their friends, what I'm hearing from my children, what I'm hearing from the community, some students are facing depression because they don't have their normal way of living. So one of the things I think we need to do immediately, and I've actually started, is I've talked to the JMP, I've talked to Rise and I'm gonna post some things. But our students and parents need resources immediately for mental health.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next question is, what is your position regarding campus security? Othuri?
Yes, thank you. I've been the lead captain's safety officer at Elserita High School, working with our children day in and day out. I have done a lot to help our kids in many challenges and making sure that the safety of our young people day in and day out. I can give a personal example of a situation that happened at Elserita High School back in 2014, when we had a shooter outside the school and I was out there with some young people and I actually helped them to get to safety and made sure that the campus went on lockdown and made sure that every student was in and safe until, until the police and everybody came to deal with the situation. Safety means a lot. We wanna make sure that we don't have no intruders come on campus. But then at the same time, we wanna make sure that our kids day in and, day in and day out, that mentally, that, that they have the resources and then the protection. As the captain's safety officer at Elserita High School, I, I talk to these kids every day, I don't make a difference in none of the kids. I show love to every nationality on campus. I work closely with JMP, I work closely with the Restorative Justice Program. I work closely with JMP, I work closely with the restorative justice program to make sure that we bring up our restorative justice. I make sure that we are fighting to keep our kids safe. And it goes from emotionally to psychologically. It's a lot of things, but we have to make sure that we are constantly in the ears of these kids, listening to them, and also making sure that they have everything they need. As the campus safety officer going on to the board, I will make sure safety is the number one. Making sure that all the resources are there to help our young people to feel secure, secure and safe, and not worrying about anything that comes on that campus. Because when a child feels safe, that child is gonna learn. And so my job is to do that. And as a school board member trustee, I would do that to make sure our kids are safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Anne, Anne, this is now the moderator. I'm gonna ask our candidates to stick to the one minute allocation. I know you all have a lot to say, but we have to stick to our time. And then Ray's going over our one minute. Robert might have to mute you if you don't stick to the time, so please, one minute answers. Thank you.
Okay, now the same question, Guadalupe. I'll repeat the question, what is your position regarding campus security?
My position regarding campus security has always been first. Two years ago, on the DL cap, around the LCAP, we recommended that the funding for security officers be moved out of the LCAP and into the general budget. With that being achieved, I think right now we're in a deficit. We have to look at, you know, cuts, cuts have to be made. And if it's not particularly gonna educate our children, then, you know, we're making those hard cuts. They, you know, that's one thing that we don't need. And I just, based on personal feeling, but also on the committees that the district has implemented, and the recommendations that many of these committees have come forward with. You know, ASAP brought up, you know, their recommendations, the LCAP has their recommendations on, you know, where that money can be better invested, you know, in the mental health services, and, you know, supporting our students versus surveilling them. You know, we have to make sure that the system's in place, not because they're there means that they're working. So I don't agree with security officers on campus.
Thank you very much. Audra, what is your position regarding campus security?
This is a very difficult discussion for me. And what I mean is that I think that we need to be really informed with something so serious. What I do know, teachers and administrators are not trained to handle crime, and should not have to. Teachers and students need increased support services. We need to think about increasing counselors, restorative justice activities and programs, and more interventions that get to the root cause of the trauma in our communities. We're not in person yet, so I think this is the perfect time to start thinking through a plan that is inclusive of input from teachers, parents, students, staff, and law enforcement. There should be a collaborative conversation. In my opinion, if we were not in distance learning, we may have even had some issues on campus without SROs on campus. Who's to say? But I think we need to come together to determine the best path for our district, for our schools. And it's a collaborative conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is, what should be the new priorities for Measure R funding regarding our facilities master plan? And I'm gonna start with you, Audra.
Thank you very much. Let me just say this, it's not at all lost on me that in the same district, we have schools that look like they should be on the front of a magazine. And then we have classrooms that don't even have windows. That's very disheartening for me. Knowing that this bond already passed, I want to fight to prioritize our schools in Richmond that are long, long overdue. We've been overlooked in this community. Once we're out of distance learning and we're back in the classrooms, the research is clear that students do better if their environment is nicely kept and inviting. That's what our babies deserve, and not some of our babies, all of our babies. To be honest, I'm very frustrated that Kennedy has been skipped over for new projects. That's not equity. My big picture goal is to make Richmond attractive for the future of businesses, to homeowners, to small business owners. Why? Because that means a good future for our students. We need to change that image so our students can have pride in where they live and can secure a good future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Guadalupe, how would you answer the same question? What should the new priorities for Measure F funding? What should be the new priorities for Measure R funding regarding our facilities master plan?
Okay, well, first of all, Measure R is a measure for classroom modernization and safety update, as well as to be used for technology. I am part of the CBOC, and we have been focusing in, when we approved this ballot, on transparency and accountability and oversight. Also looking into the current facilities master plan. The master plan was implemented in 2016. So I think really folk, really looking at what that master plan holds and updating it to fit the current needs of the district.
Thank you. Othri, how would you answer that question?
Yes, thank you. Number one, that the fund measure that was passed Measure R, which we have $575 million, and we wanna make sure that equity is done across the board. We wanna make sure that our schools in Richmond, the ones that are left undone, we wanna make sure Steed Elementary School is rebuilt. And we also wanna make sure Kennedy High School is rebuilt. And also, we wanna make sure that Richmond High School is also rebuilt. We wanna make sure that our students get a nice school with clean air flowing through the building, and they have windows, and then they feel good, and they feel positive about their school campus, and they take pride in being there on that campus. I can speak, for example, being at Elsirita High School, being on a brand new campus, where kids do take pride on being on the new campus and enjoying the sports activities and so forth. So what I'm saying is that the fund money that's been passed, I wanna see our schools in Richmond, Area Two, I wanna see Area Two shine. I wanna see our low income area come up to a good high standard. And we're all about families, everybody feeling good about their schools. I am the advocate to make it happen, and I'm ready to push forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Naomi?
Okay, here I am, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, question six. What programs or resources do you think the district can put in place to handle social, emotional, emotional learning? And I'll take this one and give it to Audrey. Audrey?
Thank you very much, I'm sorry, I was on mute. What I'll say is that mental health and health and wellness are paramount to me. It's something you're gonna hear me talk about a lot, not only through this campaign. I talked about it before I started campaigning. I engage with my team, I engage with every youth that I'm involved in and talk about it. As far as programs, I'm not sure yet what programs are gonna be most beneficial. What I always believe in is equity and inclusion. I believe that we should open up the table. Before I, as an adult, make a decision, I should bring the most important stakeholder to the table, our students. So in my opinion, we shouldn't just do surveys. At the end of the day, we need to hear from our students in multiple ways, multiple times. We need to hear from their parents multiple ways, multiple times. We need to do this as a community. Most of the work that we're gonna have to do to actually change this system and create a new one, we're gonna have to work collectively. So I think we're gonna have to come together, hear from our students, and then look at data and determine which way to go. Thank you.
Othri, I'll read that same question to you. What programs or resources do you think that the district can put in place to handle social, emotional learning?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that question. Because as I think about that question, social, emotional learning plays a major role. We need resources through our counselors, through many things that can help our kids overcome. I wanna say this, I was a student that sat one time in those seats at Martin Luther King School, Adams, and graduated from Kennedy. I went through a lot as a kid coming up, and a lot of things I experienced, but I didn't have the support. I didn't have no one to help me to go to the next level. And I struggled through school, I struggled to make it, to keep my grades up. And sometimes I felt that I wasn't able to do it. And so, but, but I didn't give up. So when I see the kids today, I'm looking at the same ones, and I encourage every young person to, don't give up, and I point them with resources. I send them to JMP, or the Rise Center, or different things that can help our kids, restorative justice, many things that can help our kids. Because I used to be one of those kids that were out there, and I can identify. And as a board member, as a board trustee, I'm gonna fight for these young kids. I'm gonna fight for these students, for every background, every nationality.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Lupe, I'm gonna ask you the same question. What programs or resources do you think that the district can put in place to handle social, emotional learning?
Well, to me, right now, this is a perfect time, I think, to be innovative. I think we have to reimagine and restructure the programs and the systems currently being used. You know, we have to train all our staff, that means anyone who interacts with our students. But we also have to have systems in place that can give us the data that we need of the implementation and success of these programs. I think we have to be data driven, and we have to make sure that, you know, we're getting that feedback of the programs that we're wanting to implement. Not just, like you said, you know, what would I like? I mean, I could like many things, but, you know, are those things necessarily gonna be working for our schools, for our certain schools? So I think really focusing in on, you know, reimagining, restructuring, not going back to where we were at because what we had wasn't working. So this is the time to like really reimagine, bring stakeholders to the table, and, you know, figure things out within our means.
Okay, thank you. Question seven. How would the district, how should the district address the issues of co-location with charter school? And I'll start this question off with Othri.
Yes, charter schools are here. We have to partnership and work collaboratively to make sure, we don't need no more charter schools, but work with the charter schools we have. And making sure that all of our kids get an education, making sure all of our kids are loved on, and making sure that they all have the resources. As a board member, I wanna make sure that we build up our attendance in this district, making sure that we focus in on areas to improve in our school system here, making sure that we have the resources to see our school district stand out as a number one district in this area. So my job as a board member is to make sure that we reach out to all those who have fallen by the wayside, bring them back into the family, that we can build a stronger education here in this district.
Okay, thank you. The second person I'm gonna go to for this question is Lupe. How should the district address the issues of the co-locations with the charter schools?
I think we need to address the co-location of charter schools by really focusing in on the impact. Not just, you know, the two schools being together, but the impact that it'll have within our students. You know, making sure that our students are not gonna be, you know, taken from to give to a charter school. Making sure that, you know, when they were talking about the expansion in Pinole, you know, the co-location in Pinole, you know, we were giving away one of our science buildings to the charter schools with the hope of, you know, building a new one for our public schools. You know, we have a lot of hopes sometimes, but I think at the same time, we need to have plans in place before we even start having those conversations. We need to really focus in on, like I said, the impact, the impact that it brings to our schools, the impact that it brings to our students, and to the families. So, you know, that's my feeling. I think we need to really have conversations around this, and, you know, what that does, you know, in the bigger picture.
Okay, the third person, it would be you, Audrey. How should the district address the issues of co-locations with charter schools?
Thank you very much for that. I think that, let me just say this, just in general. I really look forward to the day when every neighborhood school is fully, is fully able to meet the needs of our students. It's a really common topic, and what I would say is I think we need to apply equity. I think we also need to ensure that our students in our district are safe, supported, and in position to grow. We're talking about changing a system. And now, as we're talking about changing a system, we've added some new things to an existing system. I think it's always, you're always gonna hear me say this. We need to have discussions, and we need to be inclusive about the discussion. We need to bring the community in. We need to bring, and I'm talking about the students, the parents, the teachers, the administrators, so that we can address the concerns. I noticed there was one school board meeting where there was this huge issue of a co-location scenario. You've gotta talk about it, because you've gotta get through this.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to the next question, question eight. How will you address the digital divide in our district? And I think I'll start this one with Lupe.
To me, addressing the digital divide is not just something that we address within West Country Costa. I think that's a bigger conversation that we need to have. I think that we need to bring, you know, the conversations in with our elected city officials. I truly believe in partnership. I believe that, you know, conversations need to happen, and I think that we need to start, stop independently taking things on and, you know, looking to our cities for support, looking to our cities, you know, to get things done. Because, you know, right now, the digital divide is, it's a big one. And, you know, ensuring that, you know, that's something that we're electing, but it's all, you know, actually an essential thing right now. You know, if we don't have children with internet, then, you know, they're not getting educated. You know, if parents are, you know, they don't have the access, they're not receiving the messages. So I think really having a broader conversation with our elected officials and forming a partnership of how we could get that, not just for our students, but for our citywide, you know, purpose.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the same question. How will you address the digital divide in our district? And this one will go to Audrey.
Thank you very much. To be honest, a lot of the things that Guadalupe said are things that I have talked about, and I'm listening, so I'm absolutely in agreement. I also think that we may wanna consider looking at outside funding. I don't know what that exactly looks like, but I know that there's a lot of technology companies that have partnerships in our district. And at this point, we need to collectively come to them to say, our priority is, if our kids have tablets, that's great, without internet, that's a problem. We have areas where our hotspots aren't working for our children. So I agree, this is a bigger discussion than Richmond, our district, WCCUSD, it's going on nationwide. But at the end of the day, we've gotta figure out new solutions. What I'll say is that internet, we're in Silicon, we're right next to Silicon Valley. I think we need to collectively come together as a whole district and figure out who to write, what's right. We've already got some partnerships in place. But let's figure out who our network is within our district, who our connections are within our district, and collectively bombard and ask these technology companies that are right here in our backyards to support our students.
Okay. The next person, how will you address the digital divide in our district? It would be Othri.
Yes, thank you. It goes back to equity, equity, equity across the board. Number one, that we gotta make sure that our kids, especially in low income areas, have all the things they need. We gotta fight day in and day out. That means we gotta make it happen, it has to become reality. I wanna say this, we never thought that we would be in a situation that we're in now. We never thought we'd have a major, being under COVID-19, where we all trying to, you know, make sure we stay safe. But in the midst of this, it teaches us that we have to plan and look ahead in the future. But I wanna make sure that as we learn from this, I wanna make sure that we build partnership with companies throughout this area, to make sure that our kids have these resources, making sure that we apply for grants, making sure that we're not wasting no time. So when those individuals are in positions to do it, they are able to make it happen. So we gotta make sure it happens, we just can't just have lip service, we gotta be about reality and see if things done. So I'm the person that, to understand- So I'm the person that to understand that that this is a must and then this is a need for every child to have the 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 technology.
Okay, this will be question nine. What is your position regarding approving more charter schools in our district? And I think I'll take this one to um Audrey.
Thank you very much. So July one, twenty twenty, A B fifteen oh five was passed. And the short of it is this. The expectation is that we simply comply with what we're required to comply with. That's the short of it. We have to stay compliant. We have to do what's legal. If you look at that, what's stated, there's also language that talks about if there's gonna be impact negatively to our local schools, to our local communities, we have the ability to absolutely deny a charter school. So at the end of the day, we should be compliant and do what's legal. And then after that, if there's gonna be harm done to our community, if there's gonna be harm done to our kids, if there's gonna be harm done to them as students, we absolutely should not allow anything in any form to do that to our students. Thank you.
Okay, uh, that's the same question. Uh, what is your position regarding approving more charter schools in our district? And this one will go to Othelie.
All right, thank you. Um, the answer to that question, we don't need any more charter schools. We already have a lot of charter schools in this area, but let's continue to build education. Let's continue to build our public schools. Let's continue to, actually, well, let's make a campaign that we reach out and start building our schools, getting our schools moving and bringing in arts, bringing in uh trades, bringing in um all the the uh the technologies and things that can help our kids and inspire, inspire the the uh desiring them to achieve their goals. Cause every every student, every student has what it takes to make it. Every student has gifts. Every background has gifts and talent. And we, and if we empower our kids, we we don't need any more charter schools, but what we have, let's build, let's grow, and let's make this district a top number one district in this area.
Okay. What is your position regarding the approval, approving more charter schools in our district, uh Lupe?
I agree that um in West Country Costa, we have the, as school board members, we have to abide by the law. But with the additional of now being able to look at the fiscal impact of the charter schools on our district budget. With that being said, you know, I would wanna see and I would want to implement, you know, an oversight of our charter schools. And when I say that is because, you know, we need the data. You know, we have been overwhelmed by charter schools and applications into this district. Um, and if the charter schools that we currently have are working out for our district, why do we keep adding more? So I think, you know, we need to really focus in on oversight, not just our public schools, but oversight at our charter schools so that data can actually be informed and inform the community because that's been a challenge. How could we get the accurate data on how our schools are functioning if we have nothing to support it? So, like I said, I think looking at what they're bringing to the table and making sure that we're not being outgrown by them.
Okay, thank you. This will be the last question for all. The West County Mandarin School serves to students from across the district. The school has outgrown its current site at the Sierra Camp Campus in Richmond and is slated to move to the temporary portable campus at Potrero Porterol in El Cerrito. Families have requested that we move instead to the abandoned Adams School, which is the block away from Sarah and put portables there. My question is, would you support the financial investment to have school move, the school move to Adams? Why and why not? And I'll take the first question to Othelie.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Um, number one, um Adams is not safe. It's on the Hayward Fault Line. Uh, and then it would take too much money to actually put port uh portables there. So why not look at the place over in El Cerrito? It's already there where uh um Portland used to sit, where the portable is already there, and it would take too much money. And number one, we are already in a budget crisis. Our district is 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 way up there. And so we don't need to continue, we don't need to add the debt to anything, but let's use what we have. And so I'll be supportive for it to go over to where the the Portla uh campus used to be.
Okay, um, I'm just gonna read the part of the question for you, not the whole thing unless you want me to. This would, would you support the financial investments to have the school move to Adams? Why or why not? And I'll ask Lupe.
To me, um, that like, you know, that's a question that I always say, you know, we need to have conversation over. You know, this is not something that I will decide on today because we really have to have stakeholders at the table. You know, we can't keep, you know, working on, this is, you know, gonna be a hardship on our budget. I wanna see why it's gonna be a hardship on our budget. You know, we have to support every action that we take. So we're saying, you know, this is not a safe building. Show us why this is not a safe building. You know, we have to build that communication. We have to build that relationship with the stakeholders involved to then be able to make these decisions. We can't just keep talking to people. We have to talk with people. And, you know, once we have those conversations, I think we could find mutual ground of what's gonna be best for our students, what's gonna be best for the families. And not just because they're being told, but because we actually are presenting them with pieces on our whys and having to hear them on what their needs are as well.
Hmm, okay. Okay, the last person, would you want me to say the entire question or I can just go to, would you support the financial investment to have the school move to Adams? If so, why? And if so, why not?
Thank you very much for that question. My short answer is absolutely not. Um, the space was already declared safe. So in order for it to be safe, there's a large investment that has to happen for that to happen. So my concern is, I'm gonna be very honest, I'm saddened that we're having to have this discussion. I'm saddened that we're talking about this because the reality is the review plan, um, I would say we could review the plan and ensure it's equitable. But it's unsafe. It needs to have access. We need to assess the actual cost. And uh, let me say this. I think I'm concerned also for the equity in our district. We have schools like Kennedy who have been on list for years. And it feels like other projects are able to play leapfrog and skip past Kennedy. So for me, equity is really bid. It's always gonna be on my plate. So for me, it's not safe and that's the main reason. But I think we should look at equity in our district.
Okay, thank you guys. I'll turn it back over to Linda now. Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, you have to do your
Yes. Go ahead, go ahead, Naomi.
Oh, okay. What I would like for you guys to do your, um, what I'm trying to say.
The the closing summary.
Yeah, the closing summary for this. I'm my first time on TV too. Okay.
Yeah, you both have, all three have two minutes each. And so Naomi, Naomi, decide who do you wanna go first?
Okay, Audrey, you go first.
I just went. Am I next?
Yeah, you're next for this one, for your closing summary.
That that seems, okay, so be it. Um, first of all, I wanna thank you all for this opportunity to come and speak. I've been in our district for fourteen years. And in that entire time that I've been here, I've been working for our youth. I'm a mother. I'm a grandmother. I'm a small business owner and I have poured into our youth in our community. I've brought programs of my own to the district and voluntarily gave given them and gave them at Coronado Elementary. When Coronado Elementary was on the chopping blocks to be closed, myself and my young children were at the school board on a weekly basis, showing up, fighting. And when we fought, Coronado remained open and was rebuilt. As a member of ASAT and the co-chair, we fought. And as a result, we have a resolution for our African-American and black students, and we have three point two million dollars assigned to them so far. I'm a fighter. When I first came to Richmond, bought my home in two thousand and six, and I literally had to fight to get into it. I'm a fighter. Richmond is known as the city of pride and purpose. My desire is for our students to know who they are, what they come from, for there to be equity, for our students to be successful, for our students to feel good about where they live, to feel good about what they contribute to their community, and to feel good about their futures. Our children not only deserve to feel good about where they live, they deserve to feel good about where they're going. Our children should leave our high schools and our system ready and prepared for their next level. Whether it be that they want to go to a trade school, whether they wanna be an E M T, whether they want to go to a two-year institution for college, if they wanna go to a four-year. The short of it is this, change is not coming. Change is here, and I'm that change. I've been fighting for fourteen years in this district, but I fought before that, and I'm gonna continue fighting after that. So at the end of the day, what I'm looking for is people to vote for me who believe in our kids and believe in our district and believe in me. Change is here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Othelie, you can go with your closing remarks, please.
Yes, thank you. I am a product from this area. I was born, raised, grew up in Richmond. My family came here in the forties. Um, I have an aunt named Lily Mae Jones who fought hard in the community in the city of Richmond. If you look, if you Google Lily Mae Jones, that's my auntie. She worked hard, viciously, day in and day out, and fought for the needs of our young people and people all over the community of Richmond. I'm gonna fight for our young people. Why? Because I understand their needs. I was a student at Martin Luther King School at Adams and Kennedy High School. I struggled as a student. I struggled day in and day out. I I was bullied. I was messed with. But I didn't have nobody to turn to. I didn't have no mentors. I didn't have anybody. In me, I wanted to make it. I wanted to be that student to continue to push forward. And I did graduate from Kennedy High School. And I went on to higher education, but when I learned that my district failed me and did not prepare me like I should have been prepared, I didn't get the things I needed. When I got to Howard University, I I didn't realize that I missed out on a lot of things. I struggled as a student. I struggled. And I had to sit out a semester at Howard University. But you know what I did? I went to a junior college out there in Washington, D.C. to get myself together. And then I sent my stuff back to Howard and they said they allowed me to come back in. And I went through and I graduated from Howard. I'm that student that struggled. And I see these young people day in and day out, from El Cerrito High School and all the young people I communicate with. I encouraged them, don't give up. I I pointed them in directions to get resources, to get help because I've been a mentor. I've been there in a corner. I fought for them. I done seen young people die on the streets out here in Richmond. I've been out here, I I live in the Iron Triangle. I've worked in the Iron, Iron Triangle to improve the condition. I was the neighborhood council president. I worked hard um to improve the neighborhood council.
Thank you. Okay, Lupe, you be bringing us.
Well, thank you very much, first of all, for this invitation. Um, when, you know, I decided to run, I decided to run because, you know, I I truly believe that everybody needs to be represented at the board. As a mother with four sons, you know, we don't get a day off. We're we're currently showing up. I'm currently showing up. I am a product of West Country Costa. I lived in Richmond all my life. Um, and, you know, as a young mother, I I I've struggled. I've struggled very hard to make sure that the needs of my sons, as well as uh the needs of other students have been met, whether it be struggling through, you know, with my son through the special needs program at a young age, a system that, you know, is predominantly put there to, you know, that's not supported. You know, so I think even me showing up here today, you know, me being here today shows, you know, that I am in it for the long run. I'm not in it just for November third. I'm in it and I've been here and I've continued to be a support system for all our thirty thousand students. Not just, you know, some, but really focusing in on our students as a whole. You know, we we, you know, I'm a mother. I'm I'm not here, you know, being the expert of, you know, the know-it-all. But I have invested a lot of time to learn, to learn and to support the district, the parents, and the community to form partnerships, you know, to make sure that we're leading by example, that we're present, that, you know, we're talking to, not talking at. And like I said, you know, me being here, you know, struggling with my own things, personal things, you know, my son currently is in the hospital. Um, and and that's been something hard to cope with, but I'm still showing up. I'm making sure that, you know, he his needs are met, that I'm, you know, constantly there for him. But that I'm here also because I know the need that our community has to be accurately represented. And I wanna be that representation. I wanna be that voice of the parent, you know, and that's it. That's, you know, that's what I'm willing to offer. And I'm here and, you know, I wanna be your elected official.
Okay, thank you. And I wanna thank all the contestants that spoke, the candidates that spoke. And I'll turn, now I'll turn you back over to Linda and congratulations, you guys.
Thank you. I too wanna thank Othelie Christian, Guadalupe Liana, and Audra Goldie Williams for a great session, a lot of information. Uh, I want to thank Naomi and Anne for assisting us today for our trustee areas one and two. I just wanna remind everybody that um uh, when you vote on November third, you'll be voting for the first, another first, we talked about, the first West Country Costa Unified School Board, uh School District Board of Trustees for Area Two. You're gonna have a hard decision because all three of them really made some very strong um uh gave us strong information, and I think they're all strong candidates. So thank you very much for coming on and sharing your ideas with us uh and good luck. So we are going to now set up for
Excuse me.
Yes.
I would like to also thank you, Linda, for the, to be a first and the first here and the first sir.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I didn't know you were the first, so so we're both doing this together. Thank you, Naomi. So we are going to get set now for trustee area four. We're right on the dot. I think it's well, that's supposed to start at twelve o'clock, so we're going to not waste any time. We have a few minutes. So I wanna find out from, um, I'm not sure, um, Hino Hino Viva?
Yes, they're all in.
You're taking over now, right, for our
Right, and they're all in.
Pardon me?
All the candidates are in. Thank you.
Perfect. So we're going to start. I wanna see if we have our two uh league uh assistants. Are they on also? Uh, that's Cheryl and Myrtle. Are they ready? Hino Viva is Cheryl Collier on and Myrtle Braxton.
Uh, they should be. Uh, Cheryl. Uh, Bobby, can you help us with this?
Are you also there, I think? If you can, keep an eye open. We need our
Do you know what Cheryl's email address or did she log on with her name? I see there's a Collier.
That's her.
That's her.
Where'd it go?
But we also need Myrtle Braxton.
Bobby, I just admitted Cheryl.
Okay, uh, I don't see Myrtle though.
Naomi, do me a favor. Can you give her a call?
Okay.
Yeah, she's there.
Oh, she's here. Naomi, she's on.
Oh, okay.
The visual for Myrtle, your visual, and for Cheryl, your visual.
See, Myrtle, she looks muted. I see Cheryl now too. They're both muted though. There we go.
Okay, so I see Myrtle and I see Cheryl. Okay, we're all set. I don't see all the candidates. I need to see Ianad, Burrell, uh, Demetrio Gonzalez-Hoy, and Matthew. Matthew's right there. Okay, I don't see um Ianad. Okay, I don't see, um, Ianad, she on?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I'm still looking for her, I don't see her yet. Um, Hino Beba is, oh, there she is, your name. And can you put your visual on Ianad, please?
Yes, one moment.
Okay, no problem, thank you. And so I'm, I'm looking for Dimitriel Whitmore.
Hi, I'm here.
There you are, and, um, Matthew. There's your, Matthew, perfect, okay. So we're going to start, Ianad will come on visually when she, um, as she gets a set. Okay, so we have our, our third hour of forums going, and I want to say good afternoon to everybody, and welcome to the West Country Costa Unified School District and West County League of Women Voters Candidates Forum. Today, we will experience several first. The first at-large to trustee area elections, the first West Country Costa Unified School District Candidates Forum on Zoom, our Zoom webinar, and the first time for me as a forum moderator. So I am Linda Whitmore, and I am a member of the League of Women Voters. Um, let's see, we have candidates running for four trustee areas. Each candidate will have two minutes for an introduction. They'll be asked ten questions and given one minute to respond, and two minutes for a closing summary. There'll be a clock on the screen that the candidates can see for asking all of you to please respect the time allocated. Anovia Callaway, I see, I don't see her, can you, um, come on visually, Anovia, they can see who you are? Anovia Callaway, where is she? There she is, let's give us, there she is, uh, is a member of our league, and we ask that each candidate, uh, member of the league, and she's responsible for the Zoom attendees and panelists. The Zoom forum technical operator and timekeeper is Bobby Jordan. Bobby is the district communications manager. Now it's time to start the first forum for trustee area four. We have two members of the League of Women Voters who will be asking the questions to these three candidates, and they are Myrtle Braxton, can you wave, Myrtle, so let's see who you are? There she is. And the West County President of the League of Women Voters, Cheryl Collier, will be asking questions. Cheryl, can you wave? There she is. The candidates are, and if I mispronounce your names, just let me know, and I will go back and do it again, okay? Ianad Burrell, Dimitriel Gonzalez Hoy, and Matthew Trujillo.
Perfect.
Okay, very good. I want all of you to pay close attention to these candidates and their answers because on November third, you will vote for another first. You will elect the first West Country Costa Unified School District Board of Trustee for Area Four. So I wanted to say a few more things, and we're going to start. This webinar will be available on district Facebook page, on the district Facebook page, on the League of Women Voters Facebook page, and on the district's website. And we are having Spanish translation during this webinar, so it's available for those who need Spanish translation during the webinar. Last thing before we start is that we are not accepting any open questions on our chat for this webinar. We and our publicity did say we want advanced questions, which we received up until Friday at twelve noon. And then the League of Women got together with all of the questions and selected ten questions from those that were, were, um, contributed for this, for this forum. So we're not going to accept questions on the chat because we have our time scheduled for an hour. So we all will have exactly ten questions. So now I'm going to turn the forum over to our candidates and to our two league, uh, league assistants who will be asking the questions. And, uh, the first question will be, um, asked by Cheryl Collier. Okay, it's all yours, let's begin.
Okay, good afternoon. We'll start with Ianad, and the question is, how will you address the budget issue?
Thank you. My, before answering that, it was my understanding we get two-minute intros?
Yes, so right now we have introductions. Uh, Ianad, you go first, and then we'll, um, have, um, Ianad, Dimitriel, and Matthew in that order for your two-minute introduction.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Ianad Burrell, and I am a twenty-five-year resident of Richmond, California, and I am running for the West Country Costa Unified School District Board Trustee for Area Four. With the combined twenty years of corporate experience in strategic development, fund management, executive leadership and training in equity, diversity, and inclusion facilitation, as well as paralegal support in litigation and IP and securities filing, my candidacy brings a different perspective grounded in real-world experience. As well, my personal educational journey, including my current dissertation studies, has, has impassioned my wants to ensure every student has an opportunity to be exposed to, explore their gifts and talents in every way possible. I am running for this school seat, this school board seat, because our children deserve representation that focuses on them, where every board action taken is through the student-centered lens. I am running because our students deserve a trustee like me, who really believes that viewing education through an equity lens is the only way to truly transform the educational paradigm for Black, Latino, indigenous, and people of color students in the district. I'm running because we need to guarantee our students not only have equitable access to a quality education, yet have equitable opportunities as well, including the professional development of all our staff, stakeholders, and every voice is constantly heard. Top priorities, restore the public trust in the board by ordering a forensic audit of the district's financial reports. Number two, work with the community and districts regarding creative funding in, in this shortage on the budget. Lastly, our, our schools need to be safe havens for every child. Many children don't feel the environment is safe right now, and that is absolutely something that will be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ianad. Um, next we'll have Dimitriel for your two-minute summary, two-minute introduction, sorry, introduction.
Thank you. Good afternoon to everybody watching. Thank you to the league and West Country Costa, uh, for, for giving up your Saturday to listen to us. Uh, my name is Dimitriel Gonzalez Hoy, my pronouns are he/him. I am a teacher in the West Country Costa Unified School District, and I'm running for Area Four. I'm running because I deeply care about education in our district and advocating to give the tools students and educators need in order to succeed. This is deeply personal to me. As my family works for our schools, my wife is a second-grade teacher, and my students, who I've taught, still attend them. I have been working and been involved in our schools for the last eight years. I have participated in majority of the district committees. I have been involved in major projects and issues that have risen over the years, and have been attending majority of our school board meetings over the last six years. The last four years I served as president of the teachers' union have been able to learn what goes inside of our schools, as well as the system failures that we need to work on. I've listened to educators and families, which is why I can tell you the successes and the areas for growth for many of our programs. Through that work, I have shown that I can build the relationships with all stakeholders. I am proud of the many things we've done over the last few years, and I'm most proud of the work I've supported between negotiations of labor and the district, the resolutions and policies I've worked on directly, and the collaborative culture I've helped build. My campaign is a grassroots campaign, supported by teachers, parents, and students. I'm being supported by California Superintendent Tony Thurman, Senator Nancy Skinner, Assemblymember Buffy Wicks, Supervisor John Joya, the California Democratic Party, our young Democrats, United Teachers of Richmond, Teamsters Eight Five Six, who represent classified staff, the Country Costa Labor Council, elected officials from every district, Superintendent Lynn Mackey, the Richmond Progressive Alliance, and various current sitting school board members. I hope I can also count on your support, and please go to our website, DimitrielGonzalezHoy.com, to learn more about our campaign. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dimitriel. And now we'll hear from Matthew for his two-minute introduction.
Good morning. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and, um, thank you especially for making this forum accessible to our Spanish-speaking.
What we did not specify is to which areas, which schools are in, so as listeners, that's, you know, about one, two, four, five, they won't know what school.
Okay, um, I'll start over, if I may. Um, shouldn't take me two minutes. Just very quickly, thank you again for hosting this forum, and thank you for making this forum accessible to our Spanish-speaking members of the community. A little about me, I'm a certificated elementary school teacher. Um, I'm a former teacher, having formerly worked in an underserved, uh, with underserved migrant populations in Salinas. I taught there for a number of years. Currently, uh, uh, as I have been for the last, gosh, I guess it's been about eight years now. Um, I'm an environmental scientist, and I have a special interest in the Bay Area, um, climate change adaptation, and also equitable access to, uh, to the coast and, um, our natural resources. I have experienced serving on multiple boards of directors over the past twenty years. I really enjoy this type of work, and I'm running for the board because I know, uh, personally, as a product of the educational system, but also as a former educator, the importance of a good education for our children. Um, I couldn't have gotten where I am today, doing the job I love to do for a great pay and being able to own a home in the Bay Area, um, without the benefit of a high-quality education, it just would not be attainable. However, I'm troubled by the fact that so many of our students in this district seem to be underserved by the school district, where seventy percent of the schools perform below the state average, uh, of performance expectations. And I believe we owe our children a lot better than that, and I believe that I will be able to deliver, um, more opportunities if I'm given a chance to serve on the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, um, I'm going to turn this forum over to the two league members, Cheryl and Myrtle, to ask questions. And Cheryl, you're the first, um, to ask, okay? Cheryl Collier. First question.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I was muted. Okay, we're going to start with question one, and it will be with candidate Anice. Um, and the question is.
One minute, Cheryl, her name is Ianad.
Oh, Ianad, I apologize, and you're going to probably have to correct me again. Uh, I do have issues with names, but I do apologize. Ianach.
Ianad.
Ianad.
That's it.
I don't know if I retain it or not. Okay, question one, how will you address the budget issue? Right now, we're looking at a huge gap in the budget, we're looking at a tremendous deficit. Currently, our budget right now is eighty percent on staff and only twenty percent on programs. That means twenty percent towards students. What is that about? We have to figure out, how do we get here? We can't just jump in and say, we're going to fix it, this is the one-liner, how did we get here? We need to have a bottoms-up approach when we think about the budget. We need a forensic audit, different from a audit. Forensic audit is every single line item has to be accounted for. We have to know where it came from. There needs to be a conversation with superintendent, our parents, our community, and let's talk about this partnership. What partnership? Technology partnership. OUSD just got nine million dollars from Salesforce. San Francisco Unified just got nine million from Salesforce. WCCUSD needs to get twenty-nine million from Salesforce. Who has that relationship? I do. I've had relationships in the tech industry for over eight years, it's part of the work that I do. Ready to bring those conversations to the table, the money is there, but this budget will require creative, yet accountable. Thank you. Okay, um, our next candidate, Dimitri, the same question, how will you address the budget issue?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I've, I've been part of doing this work for the last two years since we found out about the deficit. Um, it has been a really difficult work. But in order for us to fix this issue, we do need to understand how we got here. As I've been involved, I've been able to learn how we, how we did get here. We understand that departments overspent from the budget that they were given. We understand that we were paying for programs with ongoing, uh, ongoing funding instead of one-time funding. Uh, we understand that we invested in way too much, way too quickly. Um, I believe that we need to do three things. One, we need to hold staff accountable so that departments and schools cannot go over what they're given. We need to rebuild trust and update our citizens transparency tool on our website, which gives monthly updates on where we are on the budget. We need to continue to update that to rebuild trust. And then we need to uphold our superintendent and, and staff to make sure that they follow the priorities that are given under the budget, so that we don't spend on other programs and other things. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we come to Matthew. The same question, how will you address the budget issue?
So I agree with Ianad that we need a, um, a thorough accounting. Uh, we do need an audit, I would call it a top-down audit, but, um, I differed her, her terms, phraseology. The trouble with this budget is that, um, I don't believe that we can afford to cut, uh, really anymore in terms of services to students. I really don't think it's a great idea to, to cut staff or to cut salaries. We're already, you know, dealing with some of the lowest-paid teachers in the state. Um, so, you know, I hate to say it, but I think that while it's a great idea to, um, you know, take a look at what's been done already in terms of assessing how we've gotten here, I think that we need to continue spending at current levels, um, until we have gotten a complete picture about what the problem areas are, where are the wastes, where are the inefficiencies? And try to avoid cuts to critical services. I think if we did that for maybe the next year or two, uh, well, probably a year, while we're getting our, wrapping our heads around, our hands around where, uh, where we are as a, as a, as a district budget-wise, I think that we will be able to come, come stronger next year and, and with a plan about what to do about this budget issue, but I think it needs to float.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, we're going to move forward to question number two. And here I go again, Ianad. The question is, how will you address issues around equity? Addressing equity is a national and an international conversation. It's going to require a whole lot, let's drill it down to this district. This district, is that? This district has recognized that there is, that there are inequities, they recognize that. Just about a week ago, the superintendent posted the weekly Fridays that are going to be happening around addressing that. And my question was, what exactly are you doing? We need specificity. Who are the programs? Who are the speakers? What's being taught? Who's teaching it? Are we doing the root information? Are we going to the root? We can start high level. We know it exists, it needs to be fixed, but we got to talk about the root. To address it goes beyond conversation, it's implementation. Look at the programming, look at access, look at curriculum, what kind, look at our teachers, look at the diversity or non-diversity of our teachers. Look at all, all of those areas. Every single one has to be addressed specifically and individually, and it needs to end with an equitable lens. Thank you. Thank you. So next we'll go to Dimitri for the same question, how will you address issues around equity?
Thank you, and it's Dimitri O with an O at the end, justify, totally fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, of course, uh, this is a great question. Um, I have seen inequity in our system, uh, from the day I started teaching. Um, I saw it in the way that we supported our students, I saw it in the way that we provided the tools and, uh, provided, you know, the needs for every single one of our schools. For a long time, our school district has provided blanket supports, where every school gets, uh, the same PD, every school gets the same resources. Um, and we cannot continue to, to do that. Every school is different, every school has different needs. Uh, and I can tell you the schools that I worked, that school that I worked at, uh, which is a flatland school, uh, needed a lot more supports than many others that might sit in different areas of the community. Uh, we need to look deep, we need to listen to our educators, we need to listen to our staff, our families, and the students themselves to understand what they need. I completely agree that there's been a lack of supports and, um, a lack of inequity lens into the decisions that we make. Uh, we have to do better. Our African-American and English-language learner students are, are falling through the cracks because adults in our system are not making the right decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go next to Matthew, and the question is.
How will you address issues around equity?
Thank you.
Um, so 90% of our student body um, come from communities of color. Um, I believe it's a third, a full third come from um, households where English isn't the uh, language spoken at home or the primary language. So for me, I think that we need to start there. Um, I feel like language access is a huge issue. Um, not just for this school district, but for all public services. I don't think that we have a tradition in this country, sadly not in this state either, of giving um, of honoring language as a, as a driver for, for the way people connect with their governments and their communities and so forth. And I feel that um, people who speak different languages are often ignored and their needs are not met. So that's where I would start. I feel like that's low hanging, hanging fruit. However, in the classroom, there needs to be a push for more cultural humility. You know, sadly, students are judged by their teachers all too often by the, you know, accents or by their, the color of their skin or their type of hair or whatnot. Um, and their differences are not honored, even though, you know, to look at it, you would, you would think that, you know, when you celebrate something like Cinco de Mayo, oh hey, you know, they're doing a great job. It's not. When it comes down to results, you know, the numbers speak for themselves. Um, our students of color are performing uh, less well than their white counterparts. And that's just a fact. So there needs to be training for teachers and staff in cultural humility, humility, not just training, but also continuing education credits. Um, we need to recruit uh, teachers of color. That means we need to provide them with better uh, pay than what they're getting to, to make it attractive. But we also cannot overlook the importance of getting the parents and the larger community involved. And that means we need to do a much better job of outreach. That means we need to provide uh, initiatives that actively seek out participation from the parents and the communities of these, uh, communities of color, these uh, non-English speaking communities. And we need to provide them with the resources that befit their language and their abilities.
Okay, thank you.
Cheryl, I'm sorry, I'm stepping in for a minute. This is Linda Whitmore, moderator. I have to ask all, all the candidates to stick to the one minute time for your answers. A few of you are doing it, but, but everybody's not doing it. So please, we have to, have to respect the one minute time for your answers. Thank you.
Um, Linda?
Yes.
The clock was not moving on Matthew. Not on my end.
Okay, I'll talk to Robert about it. So I apologize if I made a mistake, but I was watching the clock and I thought he had went over. So we'll, we'll get that straightened out.
Okay, it started moving again, but okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh. So here I go again with question three and we'll start off again with Ianad. What do you feel, what do you feel have been the issues around distance learning?
One of the things I absolutely know, have lived, have seen is that learning is not monolithic and the way we learn is not monolithic. Distance learning has brought us to a point to challenge not only how equitable and accessible our education is, but it has widened and raised the shade of what many of us have known for years. Distance learning has to be approached in a very innovative 21st century thinking way. What does that mean? No, a Chromebook doesn't solve it just because it's in the household. What does that mean? Our disabled students cannot just open up and, and all of a sudden asynchronous programming is okay. Distance learning has allowed an opportunity, while it's painful, has allowed an opportunity for us to really figure out, are you really serving students and student centered? Is there equity in education? We have to figure it out and do it fast because in the meantime, who's losing out are the students? Every, every second they're losing out. Uh, their fundamental right is being taken away. We've got to fix it.
Thank you. Okay, same question for Dimitrio. What do you feel have been the issues around distance learning?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I mean, I think that there's a lot of issues with online learning as we have transitioned. Uh, obviously in the spring, we had crisis learning, which had even more issues. And thankfully, we were able to learn for around those few months in order to make our program stronger. Um, accessibility is what keeps me up at night. Um, two board meetings ago, the superintendent mentioned how 700 to 1,000 kids haven't, at the time, had not logged in to learn. Uh, to me, it's so critical to find out what's going on with those families. What's going on with those students? How can we support them? Um, I believe that apart from that, the accessibility, we have over 1,000 students who are foster youth or homeless. Um, how are we supporting those students to have internet, to have accessibility to a computer, to have accessibility to safe space? Um, I am really proud of the work that this district has done with nutrition. Uh, but we also need to do better on that. Right, how are they supporting families and picking up lunches, picking up supper? Uh, breakfast for kids that need that the most? And also the supportive educators and all the work that they're currently doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move to Matthew. The same question. What do you feel has been the issue around distance learning?
Um, I feel that the issue, well, the biggest concern is um, of course, screen time that um, students get, you know, in front of their computers, provided they have computers. But I'll, I'll get to that in a moment. Um, you know, I don't think that it's not, I don't think that distance learning necessarily has to be the exact same experience as being in a classroom, you know, for six hours a day. Um, but um, I believe that if you're, that the screen time that you, that the student does have needs to be uh, that much more enriching. And um, my concern is that it's that while there are many students who, and, and, and who have parents and families who are on top of it, getting things done. I think that there needs to be much more monitoring and enforcement to catch those who are falling through the cracks and to um, provide them the support they need.
Thank you.
Hey Cheryl, I'm sorry, I'm going to stop you one more time. Please try to um, alternate who's starting the question, answering the questions. You've been Ian, you've been doing Ianad first for the last three or four, so let's mix it up a little bit, okay? Let's give her a break and let her go first all the time.
I'll be happy to do so.
Thank you.
Uh huh. So we're at uh, question four. And um, I'm going to start with uh, Dimitrio. What is your position regarding campus security?
Yeah, great question. Thank you. Uh, so, you know, I stood with our students in support of removal of security resource officers from our schools a couple of months ago. Um, I stood with them because we kept hearing from students that even though it created this, this sense of safety for adults, it didn't create a sense of safety for students. Um, so I stood with them at the board meeting and advocated that we use those resources and the funding to support our African American, African American students and the ASAP resolution that we passed. I believe though, that we also need to figure out, what are the tools that our sites need to support our students? Why were we using SROs in the first place? Um, a lot of adults were using them as disciplinary tools. And the reality is that that was not the right way of, of dealing with those situations. But educators and principals and staff need, uh, need other tools such as restorative justice supports. We need to fund our health centers more like Healthy Richmond has, has asked the board to do. Um, and we need to dig deep and understand what educators and students need. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move to Matthew. And the same question is being posed. What is your position regarding campus security?
I support the need for campus security. Um, you know, and, and in my estimation, the dangers that uh, our parents are concerned about, but also that honestly face children, our children, um, will not have gone away once we return to, to campus. And um, we do need, we, we simply do need security there. But I do agree that um, just like we're having a larger conversation in the country, um, we need to take a look at our approach and make sure that um, you know, just as we're talking about defunding the police, meaning to um, reallocate resources and provide better supports as opposed to strictly a, a police style uh, model. Um, we, we need to incorporate that into our uh, campus security plan. And I think that this is an opportunity for us to rethink that while students are out.
Thank you. Okay, we will move to Ianad. Uh, same question. What is your position regarding campus security?
Campus security is so overhaul. When I mean that, when I overhaul, not overhaul, overall. That monolithic view of the SROs, while yes, I also supported that removal, but it was the "and" that was missing. Removal "and". There's mental security that needs to be addressed. There's food security that needs to be addressed. There's social emotional learning that needs to be addressed. So in speaking to students, because we can't do this just from my seat, I am not at the service of my feelings. I'm not at the service of what I think. I am at the service of the students and making sure everything that I do is student centered. Tell me, what does reimagining safety looks like for you? And what they said was, I need help emotionally, psychologically, mentally. I don't have food. I'm a, all of those things. So it is so more holistic. And how do we remember that in every single thing we do? When the district reported the 750 students that didn't log in from March to June or July? We didn't hear about it till July. That's not safety.
Thank you. So we'll move to question five and I'll start with Matthew. What should be the new priorities for the Measure R funding regarding our facilities master, master plan? Matthew?
I'm, I'm here. Um, what should be the new priorities for facility funding regarding uh, Measure R funding? In our new, in the master plan? Um, I mean, I suppose, I, I'm not sure exactly how to take that question, but I suppose in the context of where we are today, it would be um, investing in, if we're going to have to return to school before a vaccine, say, investing in making schools a safer place to be. Uh, that would be involve infrastructure, uh, new structures, et cetera. Um, and I would like to see that funding, however, go to technology and access to remote learning opportunities.
Okay, thank you. So we will move to uh, Ianad. The same question. What should be the new priorities for Measure R funding regarding our facilities master plan?
Thank you for asking. Prioritization has to be done through an equity lens period. And I will use equity ad nauseam because it has, it's a part of every day. It needs to be a part of every day, everything we do and think. I've heard from parents who have voiced the fear of potentially being in trailers for another five to 10 years. We have looked, we have the CBLC that allocates the funding and the priorities. What, we have to be at the table there as well. When you think about area four, Valley View, Alinda, Sheldon, Murphy, Highland, Terra Hills, I'm looking at the trajectory of the attention paid in that district, in that, in that area. What does that look like? The prioritization comes from first and foremost equity. From an equity lens, what are the resources that are at these current locations that are missing? Or what, what has been missing? So the prioritization, and let's think about this. In this pandemic, you have to look at that even more differently. What will these schools look like to be prepared potentially for disaster in the future? Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move to Dimitrio. Uh, same question. What should be the new priorities for Measure R funding regarding our facilities master plan? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I was the chair of the committee that passed Measure R in the spring. Um, throughout the whole campaign, what we promised voters was it going to be that we were going to be transparent, that we were going to uh, hold the district accountable. The CBLC doesn't set out priorities. They ensure we hold accountability to the funds. Um, and now that we're revisiting the facilities master plan, we do have to do with equity. We have to do transparency. We have to do with inclusion of all stakeholders. Um, I can tell you that my priority will be looking at it through equity as well. Uh, you know, we've rebuilt the majority of our high schools. The only two high schools that are left that we haven't rebuilt, rebuilt have the highest students of need. Richmond High School and Kennedy High School. I 100% support rebuilding Kennedy High and Richmond High. Uh, I 100% support of rebuilding our highest need schools. Uh, and we need to do that with inclusion of all voices, not the loudest, but inclusion of all voices in every part of our community. And we need to do it well. Uh, so I support the current process of, of looking at facilities master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to move to question number six and we'll start with Matthew. What programs or uh, resources do you think that, think the district can put in place to handle social emotional learning? Matthew?
Yeah, sorry, I'm unmuting. Um, what programs or resources do you think that the district could put in place to handle social emotional learning? This is for me, the question about equity and I've um, you know, I've addressed it before. I believe that in order to get to equity, um, we need to rethink just across the board how we're dealing with um, children of, you know, households and background, disadvantaged backgrounds. So again, language access, um, support for our teachers and our staff and training. But also when it comes to services for students, um, we need to get counselors back in the schools. We need to get um, resources for our disadvantaged students, um, I mean, not our disadvantaged, excuse me, our disabled students. We need to build those up more robustly than they are and they've been funded in the past. And I'm running out of time.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move to Dimitrio. Dimitrio. Um, same question. What programs or resources do you think the district can put in place to handle social emotional learning?
Thank you. Um, so first of all, I think that we need to fully implement our positive climate resolution that we passed a little bit of a, a year ago. Uh, we need to fully support the work that LaShanta Smith and Millie Burns are doing throughout the district in implementing restorative justice practices and training our staff. Um, we absolutely need to support our health centers to continue to provide services to our students. Um, and you know, we need to invest in nurses. We have 10 nurses for 30,000 students. Uh, we need to invest in counselors. Our counselors have 700 students they have to see. Uh, that's not enough. They can't do their work like that. Um, and of course, we have to invest in, in resources like school psychologists, speech pathologists, SPAD supports. Um, but, and also more importantly, we have to ensure we're listening to our students. We're listening to our kids and we're listening to our staff for what they need. Know what we think, you know, the schools need, but what they think they need. Um, our school administrators as well. They know what's going on every day in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will move to Ianad. And it's um, the same question. What programs or resources do you think the district can put in place to handle social emotional learning?
To speak first to the resource, back in the fall of 20, last year, I shared with the district that the Mental Health Services Act budget for students had a grant out and it was a grant for health clinics within the district. I sent it to the district, crickets, never heard back. I even said, I'll help you write it because I have over 15 years of grant writing experience, funding development with nonprofits. Still, no, nothing. Ended up going somewhere else, huge missed opportunity. If we're not listening, I'm not a psychologist. I'm not licensed in that area, but I know our district has a number of them who are. What are they saying about the social emotional program that needs to happen? Conversations with those experts that need, we need to have and I need to know. Educate me, enlighten me. I have to be poured into with the intel in this area while I know broadly what it will take. When it comes to specificity, I need to talk to the experts and those students will, will teach us what we would never learn in a book or a classroom. Hoping that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. This is Braxton.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I'm going to start with question number uh, seven. And uh, my first person that I'm speaking to will be Dimitri. How should the district address the issue of co-locations with charter schools? How should the district address the issue of co-locations with charter schools?
Thank you, Ms. Braxton, for the question. So co-locations, we have two schools, well, three schools that are co-located right now. We have Calver Charter School co-located in Kennedy High School. We have a charter school co-located with Snow Middle and one with Crespe Middle School in Area Four. You know, this is creating a lot of challenges. As charter schools grow, they take more space from our public schools. This is creating and impacting our own students, impacting our own educators. For example, at Crespe, they had to give up their science building. They had to give up more and more classrooms. They tried to work with the charter school, and it wasn't successful. We have to honestly listen to them. I am not in favor of co-locations because it creates a haves and haves-nots system. But if we are forced because of law, then we have to find ways of having them in, work together to find a solution, not just charter-taking space, but actually sitting down and listening to one another on, okay, what does, what does each school need? Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to Matthew. How should the district address the issue of co-locations with charter schools?
So I start with the, I guess, the premise that co-location of charter schools and public schools is a fact of life. And so given that, I think that, that we need to look for opportunities that enable enrichment for, for the students of both schools. So I'm thinking collaborations among the staff and teachers to design curriculums that the students can work on together, maybe cross-pollination of methods, and even taking classes between, so that students attending one school can take classes at another, and so on and so forth. I think that, you know, if it's a fact of life, and if there's, if there's two schools, I mean, they, they just need to work together and work closely. And I think that if they can come together, they can design a way to make a very positive impact in the students and make it a great place to learn for everybody.
Thank you. Same question to Ianad. How should the district address the issue of co-locations with charter schools?
We are here. The collaboration has happened. The coexisting has happened. Now what? How can we help? How can we figure it out? I have to tell you, when you talk about students and having an opportunity to have a wider, wider access, how can we elevate that? Yes, it has taken away from our budget. That's not a good thing. Yes, it has, has some controls that are not as high as our schools that have to support. We know that. Yes, we may have said, "No, this is not a good thing", but during state law, they have allowed it to happen. Now that we're here, now what? How can I make this work to our good of the students? Let's talk about the parents. Why are you sending your child to the charter school? Why did you choose that? Let's talk and figure that out from them. Students, what, do you see some things over there that you like? Do you see some programs that you think you may want? Let's talk about that. Let's listen. But now that we're here, how can we figure out to make it work to our good? And I see a lot of potential opportunities, but we have to be open to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be to Ianad. How will you address the digital divide in our district?
The digital divide is a national and international conversation, but the district, it's a chasm. I call it a chasm. It's beyond a divide. One of the things I know the district has on their website is this collaboration partnership with Sprint and the district to give everyone a hotspot. That's not fixing, and I'm not saying the district is not attempting to fix the divide, but that's not fixing the digital divide. The divide goes beyond access to the internet. The divide goes beyond having a hotspot. Think about having a hotspot when you're, when you live in a home with maybe six or seven other siblings or cousins or whomever, and they're all diving in and connecting to that hotspot all at one time. You're going to get this circle. You know the circle just keeps going, 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 and it never connects. That divide is way beyond connectivity. Equity is going to go back to equity. We're talking about territories. Certain areas need much more access than just a hotspot. That digital divide will require back-to-tech partnerships, other conversations, bringing in funds that are innovative, that are new, and that are going to work. Thanks.
Thank you. Same question to Dimitrio. How will you address the digital divide in our district?
Thank you. So I agree. I think that the digital divide is, is larger than just our district. I believe it is a state and nationwide issue. You know, we do need obviously to advocate that this, with the state and the federal government to get more resources and supports there. In my opinion, internet should be free to everybody, but obviously, we cannot control that. So what we can control, you know, we got over $30 million in CARES Act from the federal government to support online learning. We need to leverage that fund. We need to learn from what other districts are doing. Some districts are buying vans in order to, to, you know, drive around their district and provide supports to students and families who don't have access, who might not have a hospital, who might not have a computer, who might not have a safe place to be, and support them in finding the resources they need to, to be able to go to school in an online way. We need to branch out and do that a little bit more. I think our communications and, and community engagement team are doing a really great job at trying to do that. But we need to do more, and we need to leverage those funds that we got in order to support our students. Every dollar should be spent on our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question for Matthew. How will you address the digital divide in our district?
Right. So like all of my fellow candidates, I, of course, recognize that it's a, you know, it's a much larger issue than we can really hope to address fully. But that said, I believe that there are things that we can do as a district. I think that what we need to do, you know, again, given the current context of how we're educating our children these days, we need to make this a top priority, not the absolute top priority. We need to dedicate resources to providing all of our students with all the equipment they need to learn from remotely. If they don't have access to internet, we need to provide that access to them at our own expense if we need to. And I know this gets to budgets and everything else, but there's just no other choice. It's got to be done. So I guess what I would say is, I would address it by trying to stop the bleeding and not try to make it worse during this time. And that's going to take a lot of attention and resources that we probably don't have to spare, but we have to do it.
Thank you. The next question is also for you, Matthew. What is your position regarding approving more charter schools in our district?
I maintain that at their best, charter schools are meant to be these hubs of innovation for trying out new new techniques for educating our children, what, what makes an effective curriculum. And so I maintain that if, that I'm open to a new charter school, if it can meet the standards that the board sets, and these standards need to be rigorous, they need to be thoroughly vetted, and I would actually probably want to create a committee of schoolteachers and administrators to evaluate these proposals for a new charter school and get their, their take on it as, as part of the approval process. But yeah, if you have a great idea, and you want to try it out, and you have the consent of parents to do it, I'm open to it. I would, you know, and ideally, I would support it if I thought it was the best way.
Thank you. Ianad, same question. What is your position regarding approving more charter schools in our district?
I am in support of a moratorium on charter schools in our district. Not only, as we know, does it affect the budget, let's take care of who we have right now. And going back to the Measure R and the funding and the prioritization, and schools like Richmond High and Kennedy High that need the highest prioritization right now. Bringing in more without even taking care of who we have right now? A moratorium is where I sit on, in terms of charter schools, which has nothing to do with their impact on education or the students. Got to take care of who we have right now. We have to make sure who we have right now are kept at the forefront. We have to make sure that equity is a part of every conversation, and we already know those schools have, who, those schools that have been suffering already and are just waiting in line, shouldn't have been a long line already, but they're still waiting to be served. That's where I stand on that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Dimitrio, the same question. What is your position regarding approving more charter schools in our district?
Yeah, thank you for the questions. So I would not support the expansion or any new charter schools in our district. Why? Because I helped co-write the charter school moratorium resolution that our board passed in 2019. Why? Because I saw the impact of charter schools opening up the health for my own public school that I was a teacher at. I saw how they did not take our special education students, they did not take our African-American students, they did not take our English language learner students or newcomer students, which technically should be against the law, but that's just simply not the case. We have 14 charter schools in our district. Two of them do a really good job at, you know, having students that look at the same, look and have the same demographics as our schools, RCP and LPS, but they're outliers. The charter schools that we see coming into our district now, like Rocka Ship and many others, are here to privatize education, and that hurts our own public schools. Now, at the same time, I would never blame a parent for finding a better educational system for their student, but that's why we have to make our schools better. We have to listen to families and parents and what they need. Thank you.
Thank you. This is our last question, and we're going to start with, whoops, when I get it in order. We're going to start with you again, Dimitrio. This is going to be a long question, so you have to really listen. The West County Mandarin School serves students from across the district. The school has outgrown its current site at the Sierra campus in Richmond and is slated to move to the temporary portable campus at Portola in El Cerrito. Families have requested that we move instead to the abandoned Adams School, which is blocks away from Sierra, and put portables there. Would you support the financial investment to have the school move to Adams? Why or why not?
Thank you. So I, I just want to start with saying I 100% support our Mandarin bilingual school. I did not support their move to Adams for a couple of reasons. One, Adams, we deemed was not safe for a charter school to go there. So why would, why should one of our public schools go to that same place if it's unsafe for any student? Also, moving the school to Adams would have taken a lot of money from our bonds program that, right now, it's slated for other schools. There are schools that have been waiting for over 20 years to be rebuilt by bond funds. So I did not feel it was fair to move up a school that is fairly new. Now, I do, I would work with the families and staff of the Mandarin School to give them what they need to be successful at Portola. But I would have not, I wouldn't have supported their move to Adams. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to Matthew. The West County Mandarin School serves students from across the district. The school has outgrown its certain, its current, I'm sorry, its current site at the Sierra campus in Richmond and is slated to move to the temporary portable campus at Portola in El Cerrito. Families have requested that we move instead to the abandoned Adams, which is blocks away from Sierra, and put portables there. Would you support the financial investment to have the school move to Adams? Why or why not?
So I would, yeah, I'm going to caveat my answer on a few assumptions. One, that if it's a majority of families who partake in the current school, are calling for the move to Adams, then that would give me reason to, to consider this very closely. And given that, I, I think that it, I think that we do need to look at, when we're making these type of decisions, we need to look at what the community wants, how to best serve. Would it affect the students and the families negatively to go all the way to El Cerrito when they could be put closer? I am, in general, a great supporter of local schools, being able to walk to and from school. It sounds like a good idea, but I, you know, I simply don't know from the question whether or not, but I mean, judging based on, you know, simply what the question asked, would I support it? I would support looking into it very carefully, and if possible, I would support moving to Adams.
The final person would be Ianad, and it's the same question. The West County Mandarin School serves students from across the district. The school has outgrown its current site at the Sierra campus in Richmond and is slated to move to the temporary portable campus at Portola in El Cerrito. Families have requested that we move instead to the abandoned Adams, which is blocks away from Sierra, and put portables there. Would you support the financial investment to have the school move to Adams? Why or why not?
I absolutely appreciate each and every time a parent is involved in the education of their students, especially at all levels, location and everything. When it comes to this particular move, I'm thinking environmental. This location that they're suggesting or would like to move to is on a fault line. And we all know, under AB 617, right now, Richmond was one of the 10, I believe, cities in the state to be part of the study around air quality, and that's affecting children, students, parents, all of us. So I'm looking at the environmental impact, that means health, and everything that follows along that. Budget-wise, of course, we don't have that right now at all, and to prioritize based on safety, education, and, and definitely including all the voices, I would not support the move. I want these children to be safely learning. I want them to be healthy, learning. Definitely want to make sure that the location where we do decide is going to be, be fitting as well. Thank you.
Thank you all for your participation. I now turn you back to Linda for your wrap-up.
Thank you. I'd like to also thank our three candidates, Ianad Burrell, Dimitrio Gonzalez-Hoy, and Matthew Torrio. You guys did a fantastic job. I'm going to remind our attendees that they have a decision to make on November 3rd. It's going to be a hard one to decide on. You will vote on the, another first, which we talked about, which will be to elect the first West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Trustee for Area Four. Okay, so again, thank you, the three of you, for spending your time with us and sharing all your ideas. I also want to thank our two league representatives, Cheryl Collier and Myrtle Braxton. And I'm asking you to get ready for our last forum, which is going to be in a few minutes for Area Five. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Okay, so we're going to move over to Area Five, and again, thank you, everybody.
Linda, do they do a summary?
That's my, okay, I've made three mistakes now. No more this forum, okay? Three, you're out, right?
No, you're with me on errors.
Okay, so, um, so Cheryl, why don't you decide who's going to do the wrap-up, and then we'll move on to Area Five. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll start with Matthew. You have a, a wrap-up, a two-minute wrap-up, I believe?
Yes. Hopefully less than that. So first of all, again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this panel. It's been a great time. And again, thank you for making it accessible to non-English speakers, Spanish speakers specifically. I just want to recap that the reason I'm running for this seat on the board is that I am deeply concerned about the shortcomings of the district. In a district where 90% of the students come from communities of color, I don't think that we can be satisfied with the fact that 70% of our schools are underperforming. And that in the year 2020, the district remains a highly segregated district along racial and socioeconomic status lines, and that even issues such as equitable access remain a distant, long-term goal. I believe that I can create positive change to address these, these issues. I am a very well-rounded individual. I have a broad background. I'm a trained scientist and a trained social scientist. I've lived many lives, had many careers. But that's all to accrue to the benefit of, of the voters if they were to elect me, because I'm an experienced board member, an experienced project manager. I take a rational approach to every question and every problem, every problem- I take a rational approach to every question and every problem. Every problem has a solution, and every solution, I believe, can be solved in an amicable manner that benefits all sides, if not pleases all sides. But also, I mean, you have a success story. My background is no different than that of the 90% of students that we serve, and that makes me a role model. And I take that responsibility as a role model very seriously. And I think that that attitude is essential in a good board member. So if you want to know more about me, please visit trujilforschoolboard.com. There you can look at my positions. You can contact me and support me. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move to Ianad for your two-minute wrap-up, please.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. Thank you for your patience. You guys have been rock stars throughout this entire process. I absolutely, I love education, which is why I went ahead and said I'm gonna go to a doctoral program. I specifically chose for my dissertation, "The Intersection or Non-intersection of Technologies Within Communities of Color With Barriers to Resources for Mental Health." I chose that dissertation topic over three and a half, four years ago, having no idea we would be sitting in this right now. Our students are not the future of tomorrow. They are here in now. It would be my complete honor to serve as a trustee and share my time, my talent, and my treasure serving our students. I have become uncomfortable being comfortable. What am I, what do I mean by that? It has been uncomfortable for me to continually watch the academic learning and achievement gap, our Black and Brown students not being prioritized, equity and equality and diversity and inclusion not being at the forefront, has made me completely uncomfortable over the years. Living in Richmond for 25 years, serving on the Healthy Richmond Communications Co-Chair for the past couple of years, serving on the CPAC Committee with the county, which is under the Behavioral Health Services, doing all of that, serving as a commissioner for the past eight years for the Arts and Culture Commission of Contra Costa County, all of those things pouring into kind of at a distance. I'm ready and prepared to be closer to the fire. This allows more impact of all the work that I've done over the years, of all the things that I know will student-centered lens and allow this district to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we will go to Demetrio.
Thank you. I just wanna start also by thanking the League, Ms. Braxton, Ms. Collier, Ms. Jackson. Thank you for helping us throughout this whole forum, and everybody watching. You know, education also changed my life. I am a product of public schools. When I first moved to the United States when I was 14 years old from Mexico, my school district was not equipped to support me. I did not speak English, and they put me into a special ed class. And it was because of teachers who took me up, took me up on their wing and decided to teach me English on their own time after school that I was able to succeed through high school and ultimately through college. When I became a teacher, I started to see the same systemic failures that I experienced as a student with my own kids that I taught here in West Contra Costa, and that led me into this advocacy. I'm being supported by so many folks, teachers, classified staff, Democrats, California Superintendent of Schools, because I've built the relationships and I've been putting the time and the sweat and the tears into making our schools better for the last eight years. I have been involved, as I mentioned, in many different things, as union president, as advocate, because I deeply care about students. I'm not doing this for any other reason except for supporting the kids that I've taught, the kids that everybody of my colleagues teaches, the kids my wife teaches, and to break those inequities that I see in the system every day. I hope that I can count on people's support. My website is demetriogonzalezhoy.com. And just super quickly, some of our priorities that we have developed together in collaboration is the prioritization of African-American students and English language learners, closing the academic and equity gap, stop the constant turnover of staff and teachers that only hurt our Flatland schools the most, and of course, you know, the reinvesting in trust and inclusion of all of our stakeholders. So thank you again for watching, and thank you to the League.
Thank you. Linda?
Okay, I got it right this time, so I apologize again for the rushing at the end. But I again want to thank Ianad Burrell, Demetrio Gonzalez-Hoy, and Matthew Trujillo. Guys, all three did a great job, and I want to remind our attendees again about November 3rd. You gotta vote for the best candidate who will serve you as the first West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Trustee for Area 4. Our two representatives, Cheryl and Myrtle, thank you very much. You have still some more work to do for questions for Area 5. And I want to, I'm getting some questions in the chat about what schools do the areas serve. And so I'm gonna ask Robert, our communication manager, to put up a map at the end of the forum, which will show the divisions of the areas and the link, Robert, where they can go to to find out what schools are in those areas. Okay, once again, thank you very much, and we're gonna get ourselves ready for area, trustee Area 5. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, before we start, I wanna make sure we have everyone on board, or on Zoom, we should say. Make sure we have Tom Panis. Tom, can you say who you are? Raise your hand for me. You hear me? Very good.
I can hear you.
Thank you. And I hope I pronounced your last name right. Panis, good. Leslie Reckler, thank you. Carolyn Weisinger.
Hi, how are you?
Doing okay. And I want to, I know we have our two representatives here, Cheryl Collier and, I'm sorry, Myrtle Braxton, who will be asking the questions. Okay, I know we're running a little late, but we're doing okay. I wanna thank you for hanging, thank you for hanging in there. You know, sometimes you wanna make sure you give all the candidates their fair amount of time, so we didn't wanna rush, but we do have time limits, which I'm gonna go over with you in a few minutes. Okay, if you're ready to start. So I wanna say good afternoon to everyone, and welcome to the West Contra Costa Unified School District and the West County League of Women Voters Candidates Forum. Today, we will experience several firsts. The first, at-large, to trustee area elections. The first, West Contra Costa Unified School District Candidates Forum on a Zoom webinar. And the first time for me as a forum moderator. I am Lynda Whitmore, and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters. We have four trustee areas that candidates are running for, and the one right now is gonna be for trustee Area 5. Each candidate will have two minutes for an introduction. They'll be asked 10 questions, and they will be given one minute to respond. And then they will have two minutes for a closing summary. There will be a clock on the screen that the candidates can see. We're asking all of you to be respectful of the time allocated. Inobia Callaway, can you raise your hand? See, there she is. She is gonna be, she's a member of the League, and she is responsible for the Zoom attendees and panelists. The Zoom forum technical operator and timekeeper is Bobby Jordan, and he is a district communications manager. Now it's time to start the first forum for trustee Area 5, which is our last forum of the day, but the first forum for this trustee area. We have two members of the League of Women Voters who will be asking the questions. Myrtle Braxton, can you wave your hand, Myrtle? There she is. And we are very fortunate today to have the president of the West County League of Women Voters, Cheryl Collier, asking questions. Cheryl? Okay. The candidates are Tom Panis, Leslie Reckler, and Carolyn Weisinger. Okay. I want the attendees to pay very close attention to the candidates' answers, because on November 3rd, you will vote for another first. You will elect the first West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Trustee for Area 5. I have a couple things I have to, some housekeeping things to do before we start. I want to let everybody know that this webinar is being videotaped and will be shown on the district Facebook page. It'll be shown on the League of Women Voters Facebook page. It'll also be on the district's website. And the webinar is being translated in Spanish, so if you need to have a translation at the bottom of your Zoom screen, you'll see where you can click on for translation in Spanish. There will be no open questions on the chat. When we publicized this forum, we did say that the questions should be given to us in advance. We received a lot of questions, and we met the League of Women Voters on Friday, and we selected 10 questions, which we thought covered a lot of the areas, which we're gonna give to you in a few minutes. So we will not be accepting any questions on the chat. I think that's it for me for right now. So right now, I'm going to turn the form over to our two League women who are gonna ask the questions, and our web form starts now.
Thank you, Linda. I'll start with question one, and Tom, the question is, "How will you address the budget issue?"
Thank you very much for that. Were we supposed to have an opening statement?
Oh, I am so sorry. Yes.
I can just go ahead with that if you want.
Yeah, since you're up, Tom, why don't you start the opening statement?
Certainly, thank you.
For the statement and introduction.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Tom Panis, and I'm a member of the school board. I'd like to start by thanking all of you for attending today, and also the League of Women Voters in the district for putting on today's forum. Hola muy buenas dias a todos. Mi nombre es Tom Panis. Soy miembro de la mesa de activa. Me gustaría comenzar agradeciendo a todos ustedes por asistir hoy también. Agradecer a la Liga de Mujeres Votantes y nuestro listo por organizar esta sesión. I came to El Cerrito when I attended Cal, and I've lived here for more than 45 years. I met and married my wife Ann here. As many of you know, both of my sons are on the spectrum and went through our district schools K to 12. Mike went to 11 different schools, and Alan went to 12. Now I'm literally on this, now that I'm on the school board, this is literally my full-time job, 50 to 60 hours a week. I spend thousands of hours in schools, meaning I've experienced the history and the ins and outs of our district for more than 30 years. Whether I'm advocating for special education families, our LGBTQ community, our African-American community, I'm a parent who can speak from experience for all those 30-plus years. I'm a big fan of our hard-working teachers, and I was instrumental in giving our teachers the raise they deserve, making them some of the best-paid teachers in the county, and I've been endorsed by the West County Teachers of the Year for the last four years. I'm also endorsed by California Assembly Member Buffy Wicks, California State Senator Steve Glazer, retired Congress, member of Congress George Miller, and student trustees for the last four years. My website has testimonials from the highest-performing principals in the district. I am proud and humbled to have received these. And they say more about me, what I stand for, what I believe in for our schools, and how I govern than anything I could ever say here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to Leslie in order to make her two-minute opening statement, please.
Hello to everyone, and thank you to the League for hosting this forum. You guys are doing a great job. I know how hard this is, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Leslie Reckler. I'm a parent with children enrolled in and graduated from our local public schools. I'm running because I want to ensure that parent voice is better represented on our school board. Our schools are suffering from a deep financial crisis, and due to COVID-19, our traditional ways of learning and our community connections have been completely disrupted in this unprecedented time. And yet, we only have one school board member on our board now that has children enrolled in our own local public schools. Parent voice needs to be better reflected in the decisions that our school board makes so that our students, families, and schools are better supported. For 14 years, I've worked hard across this district and with my sleeves rolled up, fighting for students and family, and I have a proven track record of real results. Some of my major accomplishments are work on 10 school funding measures, winning over $2 billion for our schools across this district. Most recently, I worked on and was the argument signer on Measure R, because I believe that every child, regardless of neighborhood or zip code, should have a safe, clean, modern facility in which to learn. I was a member of the team that researched, wrote, and edited WCCUSD School Board Resolution 491718, Establishment of a Positive School Climate Policy to Eliminate Wolfful Defiance Suspensions and Take Steps to Improve Our School Culture and Climate. I was on the Hewlett Grant writing team, winning $1.2 million to improve our teaching and learning practices. As a council PTA president with responsibility of over 30 PTAs, I brought hundreds of parents to the decision-making table, which allowed them to advocate for their students and their schools. I'm a mentor to Richmond Promise UC Junior. I love that work. I also have a broad business background and 20 years of experience managing budgets valued to $100 million.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to be rude, but you went past your time.
That's okay. I'll just keep going until you stop me.
Okay. Next, we have Carolyn to give her two-minute statement, please.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you to West Contra Costa Unified, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for having me. My name is Carolyn Weisinger, and I am running for WCCUSD trustee in Area 5. I'm running because I want to move this district from equality to equity, and that is a very important distinction. I have the unique experience of seeing the successes and the challenges of this district from end to end. That's as a student, a classified worker, and as a teacher. When elected in November, I really will be championing our district, focusing on reimagining all of our schools as 21st century schools. So that means focusing on fiscal oversight. That means that not only just making budget cuts, but making sure that we're making mindful budget cuts so that we are not affecting student learning, that student safety. We're going into a time where we've decided not to have our SROs on campus. We need to talk about what that looks like, and what does safety look like from the perspective of our Black and Brown students and from our Latinx and newcomer students. Educational innovation. We need to talk about the digital divide that was created long before COVID ever got here. We also need to talk about creating new career and college pathways. So talking about our HBCU PAC and our relationship with CTE and labor unions. And finally, COVID response. Our COVID response has revealed so much about our district that we really need to reimagine and look for going into the future. It's not about reopening schools. It's about looking about what our education will look for into the future. Thank you so much again for having me, and I look forward to speaking with you all.
Thank you. So we're going to move on to our questions, and our first question, I'd like to start with Leslie.
Cheryl, I'm gonna stop for one minute. The candidates, when you're not on, turn your mics to mute, because if you move around or you talk, you'll pop on the screen. So, because while Carolyn Weisinger was talking, Tom Panis popped up on the screen, because you were moving around and the noise was picked up. Okay, so mute until it's your turn to come on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Leslie? Your question is, "How will you address the budget issue?"
So we have enough problems caused by the state and the way it funds public education. So, you know, our own issues have led to the constant shuffling and laying off of teachers and staff. It's beyond disruptive. I have 20 years of managing budgets valued to $100 million, so I do come to this with a background in how to do this. So everybody listening to me, there's a few things you can do to help us. The first thing is that you vote yes on Prop 15. That might give us $18 million a year. Second is you take the census. Third, you call your state reps and you ask for the passage of SB 956. Then, we don't have a lot of easy fixes here. These are my ideas. We have properties that are potentially revenue-producing. Those need to be explored. Our boards shut down those discussions. We increase our enrollment and attendance with new programs where kids and parents want to send their schools. We fight for more accessible budget presentations. What is coming to the public is far too detailed and is not geared to the general public to establish trust, and we're probably gonna have to make cuts. We do that collaboratively together. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move to Tom, and the same question, "How will you address the budget issue?" Thank you. We're going to move to Tom and the same question, how will you address the budget issue?
Thank you. So the budget for fiscal year 2122 should be created in partnership with the community as a new document focused on students. Budget development should start from scratch, adding back the programming, staffing, and materials that have been proven to directly increase student achievement versus simply rolling forward existing programs. Obviously, with our Learning Continuity Plan, we have a chance to impact the entire budget situation there. I'm a retired CPA and Chief Financial Officer and if you watch board meetings, you'll note that I'm often pointing out errors in accounting and bookkeeping that appear in the board materials, payroll reports that don't add up, careless formula and errors in our revenue projections, cash flows that don't make sense. So we need to do a better job of holding the staff accountable and for that reason, I've requested we're receiving cash flow reports and position control reports. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to move to Carolyn. Question one, how will you address the budget issue?
Thank you so much. Well, the first thing that we would need to do to address the budget issue is to address how we got here. And we got here through mismanagement of the district. And that's been admittedly in their presentations on the budget. And so what we would first need to do is actually shuffle our priorities. What is it that we're thinking of that's important? One of the things that have been the conversation in the community is getting rid of our SROs and safety. So we know that just for instance, WCCUSD spent $1.5 million on our SROs. We also spent $15 million over our projected budget on bringing in administrators to police our Black and Brown students. If we're saying that we're moving from being a police state and an education organization that teaches kids to be police, we need to look at that. And those are the type of budget decisions that we need to make. We need to know what our priorities are and then we need to either make cuts or add in funds from that point. But we can't do that until we know what the priorities of this district are.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to question two and I'll start with Tom. How will you address the issue around equity?
So equity is a huge issue in our district. And one of my top priorities, absolutely, I shouldn't mention one, my top priority is making this a completely anti-racist school district. It needn't be fight against racism and all the injustices that is fostered in our community. That's one reason why I'm so happy with the equity work that we're now doing on Fridays in our schools. But equity goes a lot further than that. In our facilities master plan, I have advocated for equity and I've advocated that we have more students and more parents on our prioritization committee. I've proposed with the governance committee and we're working forward, moving forward on developing a diversity, equity, and inclusion policy. And also I'm proposing that in the same way that we have a fiscal impact for every budget item, we have an equity impact for every budget item. I've also gone through restorative trauma-informed practices and positive behavioral intervention support practices for three weeks to better foster equity. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Next, we'll go to Leslie. And how will you address the issue around equity?
So equity is a verb. Equity is action. And I realize that I have benefited greatly from a white supremacist system and I realize this and I address it every day. I've realized a long time ago that white parents had a lot of benefits and were entitled to a lot of things that other parents weren't. And at that time, I rolled up my sleeves and I got to work making sure that I could even the playing field and make it equitable for all parents. And I've done this work for years. Through PTA, I brought parents to the table and I've taught them how to fight for their schools and their students, for the programs that they want. I've taught them how to speak at board meetings. I've taught them how to write letters. I work on the DL Caps Committee, very serious work about raising parent voice for the decisions that they want. I come to this work as a learner. I have a lot to learn. I try to be the quietest voice in the room and sometimes I apologize. I cannot hold back. But I do it with love and the work has been meaningful to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move. I've lost my place. Okay, is it Carolyn that will answer the question?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I apologize. Okay, so your question is the same, on equity, I believe. How will you address the issue around equity?
The very first way that I will address the issue around equity is by doing what I'm doing right now, which is running for this position. And this is what we say when we talk about being ahistorical, about the history of West Contra Costa, formerly Richmond Unified School District and the ward that's now known as Ward 5. We know we need to do a better job of bringing our Black and Brown people to the table. It's very disturbing to me that there have been Black and Brown teachers such as myself who have been talking about race and equity for years in West Contra Costa. I'll even say before I was a teacher as a student. And we just now are having board members who are learning what it is to be anti-racist. It's not enough to just be learning what anti-racism is right now. You have to already know what it is and know how to actually take critical race theory and wrap it around every type of policy that you are making for each and every student in our district. So that's how we'll do it. We're going to bring that critical race theory. We're going to bring in those equity theories and we're going to wrap it around all of our policies. But we do need to do that by bringing more Black and Brown people to the table.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to question three and we're going to start with Carolyn. What do you feel, what do you feel have been the issues around distance learning?
So the issues around distance learning, that's so broad. And you know, I had the opportunity to sit with my niece and nephew as they were doing their distance learning and learning a lot about what our young students are facing as well as our adult, or rather, our high school students. Our high schoolers, we're facing a situation where a lot of our teachers were not as up to par with our technology as we as a district were saying that we were making sure that we were. We're facing a situation where we as a district were saying that we had a one-to-one ratio of our laptops and we did, but those laptops were completely ineffective. Those of us who were working in the district knew that. This is something that needs to be addressed. That's the very first thing that needs to be addressed. Then we need to address the way that, what the expectations that we have of our teachers for our distance learning. And we need to be honest about the fact that we are a district who is not just facing COVID, but we face environmental emergencies all the time. We need a plan. When there's a fire that springs up that takes us out of the classroom, we need a plan. We were not prepared for this and that is the overriding problem with social distancing right now.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move to Leslie. What do you feel have been the issues around distance learning?
So thank you. I was on the school reopening task force and as a parent, along with other parents, we elevated a number of concerns and we're actually very glad. Many of these things are in the plan. Cutting down on the number of platforms, built-in SEL, built-in supports for students, built-in teacher training, built-in parent training to get them on the systems. So we're very happy with the framework that was laid out. And now, as I spoke about on Wednesday night's meeting, this is now all about continuing cycles of improvement, both at the site level and at the district level to improve the practice right away. So what we've asked the district to do is, how are you going to do it? On what timetable? In what formats can information come back to you? And how are you going to nimbly make improvements to the system? So that's where we are right now. We just rolled it out. We're just in like our fourth week of school, but we are expecting to see improvements and change going forward.
Oh, thank you. Okay, now it's your turn, Tom. What do you feel have been the issues around distance learning?
So thank you very much. So distance learning is new and it is very challenging. I've talked to many teachers about this and they're frustrated in many ways. But even last spring, when we went through the first round of distance learning, teachers were discovering new ways that they could do things that they intend to bring into their classrooms once we get back to a non-COVID mode. At the same time, this has become a huge equity issue. You know, we discovered last spring that one-on-one did not actually mean one-on-one because we weren't one-on-one in our kindergartens and in our first grade classes. And so we had to very quickly move to address that issue. There's also a huge equity issue with access, you know, via the internet. We worked hard on that. We're continuing to work on it. But like even now, if you're in a house with four kids, does each kid have a private space to work? Does each kid have the ability to do all their work or is bandwidth constrained into the house? So we need to work together to make sure we have the right hardware, both internet connectivity and computers in our kids' hands.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to question four and take a deep breath, Tom. You're up next. What is your position regarding campus security?
Okay, campus, yeah, campus security. Thank you. So campus security involves both SROs and CSOs. And we actually made a decision at the board recently to remove SROs from our campuses. I actually voted in 2017, when this came up before, that we needed to remove all armed police from our campus. And I stand very strongly behind that decision and I was thrilled when it came back up just a few meetings ago and we're able to move forward on this. But just removing the SROs is one thing. We need a safety plan in place. We've been pushing the district to give us a safety plan. COVID has blessed us a little bit there in terms like we have more time to create that safety plan. But we also need to make sure we're taking that money that we saved on SROs and we need to be investing it in better, more counseling and mental health services for our kids. We need to use it to enhance our full-service community schools. And you know, safety is a feeling on campus and I think having the SROs gone, particularly for our undocumented and other students, has been great. But I stood behind the SRO decision.
Thank you. Leslie?
Sure. You don't have to repeat it. So everyone wants to feel safe on campus. There's absolutely no question about that. Students, parents, teachers, if people don't feel emotionally and physically safe, learning is impeded. So what we do now is, we need to do a couple of things. We need, I think we need a couple of task forces. So we should develop a district-wide task force. We have a lot of talent in this district that knows how to do it. We comprise a team of CSOs. We've got counselors. We've got students. And we form an initial framework for the entire district that outlines all the needs. And then we form campus teams because every school is not going to look the same as to what safety looks like on that campus. And we have each of those sites devise a plan and we ensure that the resources are available so that they can enact those plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Carolyn. Same question. What is your position regarding campus security?
Well, first regarding my position on campus security, you know, the day that I knew that I was no longer going to be teaching was the day that one of my students was arrested on campus by our SROs. And we need to be very honest about these sort of things. And a lot of times when you talk to members of our community, they're members like me who've been in our community for over 40 years, who went to West Contra Costa Unified School District schools. And they have a cognitive dissonance because they don't understand when you say campus security. They don't understand the difference between SROs and CSOs. What we remember was the old-school Richmond Unified School District police officers, who were more like our CSOs now. So my position is that I definitely stand behind the students, the amazing students who ended the contract with the SROs. We do need to really focus on reducing. We need to work on preventative versus intervention. So we need to work on reducing the amount of exposure that students would have had to what are now SROs. But we need to also focus on interventions. What are the things that are causing students to have these issues? So we need to work on both of those things.
Thank you very much. So we're going to move to Tom this time. And the question would be, what would you, what should be the new priorities for Measure R funding regarding our facilities and master plan?
So thank you very much. We have a facilities master plan with a clear set of priorities laid out. We have about $1 billion, I think it's $1.1 billion in projects to do and we have about $600 million that we can spend on that. So the board is actually authorized that we update the facilities master plan and we're starting that process right now. We need to do this completely with equity. You know, I pushed to make sure that all new construction is air-conditioned, which is something that never been part of the district plan before. And that's, to me, that's a huge equity issue because we had so many flatland schools that became unbearable at warmer times of the year. I've also pushed to make sure that people can self-nominate to the prioritization committee because I feel like we need to get more than just district-recommended people. But more importantly, we have to make sure that we address the needs of all our flatland schools, Richmond High, Kennedy High, Lake. Many of our schools have been promised improvements.
Thank you. We're going to move to Leslie and it is the same question. Would you like me to read it again?
No, I think I'm good with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I very much supported Measure R. I was an argument signer on Measure R. Mr. Panis did not vote to support Measure R. Measure R meant the world to me because I believe that every child in this district, regardless of their neighborhood or their zip code, deserves a safe, clean, modern facility in which to learn. I myself work at Kennedy High School and I couldn't go in there one more day and work there and know that those kids were in that school. So I was very much in favor of Measure R. The master plan is about five years old. It does need to be reevaluated and reprioritized. We absolutely must put an equity lens on the work that's done there in terms of the prioritization. I am looking for critical needs first. I don't want buildings falling down on kids and then I want kids in beautiful facilities where they feel safe and comfortable and valued. And that's the work I intend to do on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to Carolyn. Same question. Do you need me to repeat it?
No, I'm good. Thank you so much. You know, the priority for the Measure R fund has to be rebuilding Kennedy and Richmond High. And I'm going to just tell you a short story. When I was teaching at Richmond High School, we had an electrical glitch, which sometimes happens with large buildings. PG&E came out to get it back up. They got it back up. It went back down. We were out of our classrooms for about three to four days because they could not get the electricity at Richmond High up. Basically, it came down to the building is old. I mean, as I've said, my family is from Richmond. My mom was the first high school senior class at Kennedy High School. My mom graduated in 1968, okay? It's not okay, and I'm running in Ward 5, it's not okay that we have made sure that El Cerrito, Viña, Penal Valley, coincidentally, the schools that are not our Title I schools have made sure to get their retrofit in their new buildings and Kennedy High and Richmond High have not. And we have to make sure, if we're saying that we're prioritizing our school, our students, and our low-income communities, those buildings come under that. That has to be the priority.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to question six and I'll start with Leslie. What program or resources do you think the district can put in place to handle social-emotional learning?
So healthy school cultures and helping our students develop skills and manage their emotions and resolve conflicts and, you know, make responsible decisions. This is paramount to learning. It's all about forming great relationships with students and great trust and having great campus environments. Some of the things that I really believe in are trauma-informed practices and understanding how trauma affects students. We're all, every single one of us has trauma right now. I mean, parents could use the trauma-informed practices as well, but to make sure that everybody knows about that. It's also about creating senses of belonging, teachers training to create belonging, training our students about belonging and making people feel part of the school and the campus. This can be done in a number of different ways through advisory, support systems, also community schools, health centers, counselor, counselor networks, small peer groups are all ways that we can help with SEL. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move to Tom for this question. Would you like me to repeat it?
So thank you very much. So first of all, you know, if we're talking about literally about programs, then all programs need to be council-certified. That's the organization that certifies social-emotional learning programs. And so that's very important. Positive Behavior, PBIS, Positive Behavioral Intervention Supports are crucially important in our district. We've implemented those in a few schools. And the idea is we're reforming our system of justice from punitive to being restorative and non-punitive. And I've actually been to two one-week sessions on PBIS and those were very worthwhile times. I also think that I also think that restorative and trauma-informed practices are key to proper social-emotional learning in our school district, and I actually went to a one-week training that we did with Millie Burns on restorative and trauma-informed practices. We need to make sure we're including student voice in everything we do in terms of social-emotional learning, and we need to make sure that we have enough school psychologists and counselors to support our students.
Thank you. Okay, Carolyn. Question number six for you as well. I can repeat it if I need to.
Yes, can you repeat it for me right quick, please?
I'd be happy to. What programs or resources do you think the district can put in place to handle social-emotional learning?
The best part about West Contra Costa Unified School District is that everything that we have, that we need to support social-emotional learning, we have, we're just not using it effectively at all. You know, going back to the question about our SROs and security on campus, we need to be making better use of our restorative justice folks that are on campus. We have teachers that are trained in restorative justice, we also have great organizations such as Catholic charities that are used on our campus, but we don't use them enough. We use them usually at the very last minute. I'm very proud to have been in the very first cohort of what was called our Conflict Managers at El Cerrito High School, I think they have a new name now, that was back in 1995. They are still around there at El Cerrito High School, that's something that we need to start bringing to the rest of our campuses. We need to make sure that we're investing in our arts education, we need to make sure that we are taking our community schools and effectively using them across our campuses. At Richmond High School, the community school model was used very well between our health services and between the counselors on campus. So, like I said, we have all these tools, we have the social-emotional things that we need, but we need to make sure as a board that our sites are actually implementing all of those.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Braxton?
Unmute. Thank you very much. I'm going to start out with question number seven, and I'm asking Tom this question first. How should the school district address the issue of co-locations with charter schools?
So, thank you. You know, the charter schools are here to stay, and I think we need to think really hard about how we can be good neighbors with them. It's very difficult to have two schools located at the same site. At the same time, we should all be dedicated to making sure all kids get a great education. And I'm actually thinking that we should have, for example, site councils that include principal and students from both schools to be meeting frequently to discuss issues that are going on. I think we just need to have a good neighbor policy regarding this. I'm hoping we don't have to do any more co-locations, but if that comes to the board, that comes to the board, and board members need to make tough decisions. Keep in mind that we're probably not going to have any new charter schools because of AB 1505, but I think that a good neighbor policy, and let's get along, site councils are the way to go about this.
Thank you. Same question to Carolyn. How should the district address the issue of co-locations with charter schools?
You're muted, Carolyn.
Thank you, Tom. I've had the experience of working in co-located schools, both in West Contra Costa as well as in LA Unified School District, so I've seen both the successes and challenges on both ends. And I think the way, I would actually agree with trustee Panis on the fact that we do need to actually have a better relationship between the charters and the WCCUSD schools. I have seen unfortunately where we have our schools where we are limited on desks, we're limited on rooms. We need to have a better system in place as to how we determine who gets what. And if it comes to the board, the board will have to make those tough decisions as to making sure that our students are the priority. But of course, we are dealing with the moratorium because of the AB 1505, but if that does become the case, we do need to have better communication, but we do need to be able to make those tough decisions and advocate for our kids on those campuses.
Thank you. Leslie, same question. How should the district address the issue of co-locations with charter schools?
Thank you. This is an extremely problematic issue and one that we are living right now. Charters get in the fast lane at the expense of our own public schools, and right now at Crespey High School, Crespey Middle School, we've had a lot of conversations about moving all of their facilities around to grow, you know, a charter school. This is the law, we need to be responsible and adhere to the law, but it doesn't make it easy. At this point, we really only have a good neighbor policy, and that is what we do need to do and encourage both parties on that campus to work as collaboratively as possible together. But as a board and as your own person, you can advocate, and now that they've fixed a few things with 1505 and, you know, the other laws that just came along, the time is now to ask that Prop 39 be addressed and that our legislators put together a set of laws that allow better coexistence. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will go to Carolyn. How will you address the digital divide in our district?
Thank you, I think the digital divide will be addressed in our district by actually leveraging district partnerships. You know, I was a student in West Contra Costa, which was in Richmond Unified the very last time that the district was in financial straits such as it is now. And it was actually leveraging partnerships that helped get us out of that hole then, and it will be the same thing with our digital divide now. I am currently the president of the largest LGBT pride celebration in the world, a San Francisco pride, and in that position, I have been able to build a lot of relationships with organizations such as Google, such as Facebook, such as YouTube, who are ready and waiting to support districts such as West Contra Costa in their digital divide issue. So, that will be helping us get new technology, new laptops, helping us actually get better app services, helping us build technology, build services that our teachers can actually use, and actually give more training for our teachers, because some of our teachers do need more training on how they can actually boost their technology in their classroom. So, it's really going to be partnerships and relationships, and that's what I would actually bring to the board.
Thank you. Leslie, same question.
So...
Oh, I'm sorry. How will you address the digital divide in our district?
So, we definitely have a digital divide, and I want to give a huge shout-out to our tech team, Tracy Logan, who has done incredible work trying to bridge this over. So, every child in our district does have a tablet. Where we are falling short is on the actual bandwidth, Wi-Fi. And I myself, I wrote a grant to the National PTA for $15,000 that we could donate to our school system to improve, get hotspots for our students. We didn't win it, but I realized how serious it was. The district is looking at buying its own network for like five or six million dollars. They did have one presentation at the board, there were three different options that were presented. I highly support this effort, and I look forward to that presentation bringing back, being brought back to the board, which would supply more of our students high-quality broadband. And then, everybody who's on this call, everyone who's listening, you know, get on the advocacy train and write to Gavin Newsom, write to your state legislators, and tell them we need free broadband for every student. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, same question. How will you address the digital divide in our district?
Thank you. So, the digital divide does not just exist in our district, it's a national and international program, and it's just been made a whole lot worse by the COVID crisis. It certainly is an equity issue, and we need to be very focused on it. Our IT department, as Leslie said, has just like done an incredible job. They have worked so hard to get hotspots and find grants to buy hotspots and to add PCs and laptops to our inventory, so we're ready to do swap-in, swap-out replacement, that's very important. But you know, still at the home, there's just a lot of people even with a hotspot that we provide. If you've got three or four people in a home, do the kids all have a separate space where they can work? Is there enough bandwidth to support them all? It's a huge problem. You know, we did bring to the board a discussion about creating our own network, and that'll be helpful. Also, you know, we've got fiber strong all over the district, and we could also perhaps look for a grant to provide hotspots at selected places around the district. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be for Tom, you're the first one. What is your position regarding approving more charter schools in our district?
Okay, thank you. So, as I mentioned initially, AB 1505 means that we're not going to be approving any new charter schools within the next two to four years, because there's limitations on financial impact. But in general, you know, I have been doing what I was sworn in to do, which is follow the law. While I've been on the board, five new applications have come in for charter schools, and I have opposed two and supported three. Of those three that I supported, two actually became charter schools, so I wasn't the only voice advocating for those. As a special ed parent, you know, my sons, both, you know, it's not part of me to take away the right of any parent to choose the school where they want to go. My primary goal on the board is to ensure that all of our students are able to go to high-achieving schools and that one day, every parent will be thrilled to send their child to their neighborhood school, that child will get a great education, an equitable education, and they'll be A to G eligible when they leave school. I also want to say I fully support the charter school laws of the past AB 1505, 1507, SB 75, and SB 126.
Thank you. Carolyn, same question. What is your position regarding approving more charter schools in our district?
Give me a...
Did y'all see me throw a tantrum, I'm sorry. I fully support the moratorium that the district placed on charter schools in our district, and of course, because of the AB laws that have been handed down, we won't be approving any soon. But I want to be very clear, we need to have better conversations about the difference between the for-profit charter schools that have been coming into WCCUSD versus the grassroots schools. And anyone who says that you can make any charter decisions without actually having that conversation, without those nuanced stories about the Oakland Community School, about the Marva Collins School, they don't know a thing about black education and black liberation. Half of the things that we have discussed on this call, things like free lunch, things like free breakfast, things like the social-emotional learning, all of those things came from the Oakland Community School. And in the words of Erica Hudgens from the Black Panther Party, who was one of the founders, she said, "They created the Oakland Community School not to be in competition with the public schools, but to be a template for what a school could be with more empathy to this child." So, we need to have those nuanced conversations and talk about what we are not doing as a district.
Thank you. This is our last question, and Leslie, you're going to have that question too, so don't mute. Okay. The West County Mandarin School serves students from across the district. The school has outgrown its current site at the Sierra Campus in Richmond and is slated to move to the temporary portable campus at Portla in El Cerrito. Families have requested that we move instead to the abandoned Adams, which is blocks away from Sierra, and put portables there. Would you support the financial investment to have the school move to Adams? Why or why not?
Ma'am, I definitely answered the charter school question. Would you like me to answer the Mandarin School question first, or go back to the charter school?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'll go with the charter school question. So, I also agree that under 1505, I don't think that anything is going to come to the board as a new charter petition anytime soon. The one thing I do want to do is correct Mr. Panis' record, he talks about his new charter schools, but he should be asked how many renewals he voted for, and it's more than a handful, so I'd like to point that out. I'm actually quite disappointed in this board, because the reason why all these parents have gone to charter schools is because the board has not put their foot down and listened to parents and students providing new and exciting programs that kids want to come, and parents want to come to this district and come to our schools. As a matter of fact, we have more kids now being educated in West County than ever before, but they're not in our schools, they're in different programs, and that shows that we haven't met the need. So, now we have to go back and figure out what those parents want, and we know, it's about safety, it's about rigor, and it's about programs, and as a board member, I am going to be asking questions about how we get those families back. Thank you.
Thank you, I apologize, Leslie. Now, start her time over, because she's up first for the West County Mandarin School question. You want me to read it again?
No, I'm okay on it, and I also want to say that I really appreciate you, and I do a lot of these too, and it's a lot to keep advantage, and I really appreciate you.
Thank you.
So, for the Mandarin School, you know, I want to do a little bit more learning on this, but I am not in favor of putting this on the Portla campus. When the Mandarin School was first formed and it came to the board, I see this as an equity issue, and here we go, putting a great gem in my backyard, right at the bottom of my hill, where all of my neighbors in a well-resourced part of the district have another great option. And honestly, I'm not in favor of that. Can you imagine being a parent from Pinole, driving down 80 every day to drop your kid off at the Mandarin School? I, you know, I'm not in favor of it. The population right now comes from all over the district. I'm very sure these are people that would have gone charter, or would have gone private, or would have picked another option if the Mandarin School had not been there. It draws from all over the district, and I'm very much in favor of having it have a central location where all families have access. They're also out of time, they need to make a decision quickly, they're out of space, thank you.
Thank you. Same question to you, Tom. The West County Mandarin School serves students from across the district. The school has outgrown its current site at the Sierra Campus in Richmond and is slated to move to the temporary portable campus at Portla in El Cerrito. Families have requested that we move instead to the abandoned Adams, which is blocks away from Sierra, and put portables there. Would you support the financial investment to have the school move to Adams? Why or why not?
Well, thank you. So, this came to the board in July, and the board made a very clear statement, and I was part of that statement, that we were not going to move the school. The Adams site is seismically questionable at best, in theory, we could put portables there. But I see this as much as a big equity issue, because we have $1.1 billion in school needs, at least for construction, and we only have $600 million to do it. And there are many people at Kennedy High, Richmond High, Lake, many schools across the district that have been waiting many, many, many years, ten, fifteen years, to get their schools rebuilt. And I would love to have a wonderful school for the Mandarin School, wonderful site, but I think that the Portla site will fit them just fine. I'd also just like to thank Ms. Reckler for pointing out that I've approved several schools. I've also voted to close three charter schools while I was on the board.
Thank you. The last question is going, this last question is going to Carolyn. The West County Mandarin School serves students from across the district. The school has outgrown its current site at the Sierra Campus in Richmond and is slated to move to the temporary portable campus in Portla in El Cerrito. Families have requested that we move instead to the abandoned Adams, which is blocks away from Sierra, and put portables there. Would you support the financial investment to have the school move to Adams? Why or why not?
Thank you so much, and you know, we definitely need a great campus for our Mandarin School. I do not support it moving to the Adams site, because I do not support the $11 million it would take to seismically retrofit the site, especially as we've gone back to the last question about replacing Kennedy and Richmond High, those need to be our money priorities when it comes to buildings, to the point of parents having to come to the Adams site. I live right on top of actually both Portla and Adams, and actually, Adams is more accessible than the Portla site. We have to remember that Portla site is actually across the street from another private school, so those of us who literally live on this hill would be in a nightmare every day. But that's not a problem, I'm not considered in this, but I think that it would be more accessible for people to go to the Adams campus, and I don't support using the funds that it would take to actually fix it. I think that the Portla site would be suitable at this time.
Thank you all for answering questions, and I'll turn it back to our leader.
Okay, I'm going to give everyone a chance to do their closing summary, and I'm going to go in the order of my list, on my little notes here, and so I have Tom Panis first for his summary, and then we'll have Leslie Reckler, and we'll end with Carolyn Weisinger. So, Tom, you're first.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank the league in the district very much for putting this on. Because they can see I'm here for kids, I've been endorsed by state assembly member Buffy Wick, state senator Steve Glazer, and our legendary retired congressman George Miller. But to me, the most telling information, the most telling information on whether I've been a great school board member is the amazing testimonials that I have received from student school board members for the last four years, teachers of the year for the last four years, many high-performing principals throughout the district. many high-performing principals throughout the district. One additional endorsement that means so much to me was given to me by a person who, in search of a better life, took a journey that many of our families have taken. She immigrated to the United States with her parents from Mexico without documentation when she was about to enter the fifth grade. She wrote this about me. "Tom Panis is a relentless educational advocate who fights for kids and families across West Contra Costa. In his capacity as board president and board member, Tom has clearly defined the focus of his public service to make fully informed and responsible decisions that will lead to opportunities and outcomes for every child in our district so that they can succeed in life. He prioritizes creating systems and procedures that stabilize and sustain financial health of the district, communicating frequently with multiple stakeholders and learners, serving in schools and district committees, and taking the initiative to learn and be an ally in the continuous work of racial, social, educational, and linguistic equity. As a parent, active community member, and school board leader, Tom is fully equipped to continue building partnerships with families and fighting to improve the educational experiences for children in West Contra Costa." So that was written by Stephanie Hernandez Jarvis, who is now a talented bilingual kindergarten class teacher, serving students who share her story. She is incredibly brilliant and unbelievably equity-focused. She has demonstrated tremendous empathy in her role as president of our school board. To be endorsed by her should be everyone's dream, and I am totally humbled that with her life story, she would say this about me. I humbly ask for your vote. Thanks so much.
Okay, Leslie, you're next. Thank you, Tom.
So I'd very much like to thank the League for this opportunity, and I thank the moderators and the district staff for a great forum. I also would like to thank the other candidates, all the other candidates for their participation and for running. We know this is not easy, but we do it for our kids and their futures and for the benefit of all of our communities. This district is at a point of great inflection. Budget, distance learning, communities isolated, overwhelming trauma. As a parent with children enrolled in our district schools, no one can fight for our needs better, and the voices of parents with enrolled children have been underrepresented on this board for years. What happens here really matters to me. These are my kids. These are my kids' friends, my neighbors. I spent my 14 years with my sleeves rolled up, working for families across this district, and I've got real track record of results in funding, in advocacy, in programs, in new ways of doing business in the WCCUSD. So you have a choice right now. Do we like the last four years? Do we choose to repeat it? Or do we want fresh, new, experienced leadership, a known, full-throated advocate, an out-of-the-box thinker that's going to challenge us every day to think differently about what we are doing and how we get there? I am endorsed by a broad local coalition that knows our schools best. Janet Ableson and Rochelle Pardue Okimoto of the El Cerrito City Council, Tom Butt, Mayor of Richmond, Gail McLaughlin, former Richmond mayor, current candidate for the Richmond City Council, Melvin Willis, Eduardo Martinez from the Richmond City Council, trustee Consuelo Lara, Madeleine Cronenberg, former trustee, Todd Groves, former trustee, Annette Lewis and Sarah Butler, Contra Costa County Office of Education, the United Teachers of Richmond has endorsed me, Teamsters 856, Contra Costa County Building and Construction Trades and Labor Coalition, hundreds of parents, students, community members, and teachers that know my work in community. Visit my website, lesleyforwccusd.com. I think the choice is clear in November. Vote for me. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Leslie. And last, of course, but not least, we have Carolyn. Carolyn?
Tom didn't tell me this time. No, I'm just playing. Thank you. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for having me, and thank you to all the candidates and for everyone who's here. I'm so excited about this opportunity to represent WCCUSD. We're at a time in 2020 where so many of our institutions are almost essentially crumbling around us, which is a great thing, because we get to remake all of our institutions. And Devin Carballo, the professor of critical race theory, said, "It's important that you take stock into making good choices of the people who are giving you the choices that you get to make." So this is an opportunity where we get to make new and bold decisions. We don't have time to wait for individuals to learn about what anti-racism is. We need to be able to do that critical race theory right now. We don't have time for individuals to learn about the importance of why ICE is scary to our newcomer students. We don't have time for them to learn about why family detention centers are okay. We need to be able to do that right now. We don't have time to be figuring out how to make sure that our campuses are safe for our LGBT students. We need to have trustees that can do that right now. And they need to be able to do that while they are fixing our budget, while they are looking at social emotional learning. All of these things need to be held right now. I am a product of West Contra Costa Unified School District, not just of the district, but I'm a product of one of the most legendary leadership teachers that this district has seen. My students will tell you, they fall from the Marilyn O'Brien School of Leadership. I'm proud to be endorsed by Marilyn O'Brien and other teachers such as Janet Smith and Edwina Elsie. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Democratic Party of California and the Democratic Party of Contra Costa. And anyone around this nation who has experienced my leadership, that I learned at El Cerrito High School, has endorsed me. I've been endorsed by Mayor London Breed from San Francisco. I've been endorsed by Mayor Robert Garcia from Long Beach. I've been endorsed by Richmond City Council Member Demla Johnson, Richmond City Council Member J.L. Myrick, El Cerrito City Council Member Gabe Kinto. I've been endorsed by Assembly Member Rebecca Barakahan. And the list goes on and on, across this nation, who have experienced the wonderful leadership that I learned at El Cerrito High School and that I will bring to West Contra Costa Unified School District. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And I want to thank all three of our candidates, Tom Panis, Leslie Reckler, and Carolyn Weisinger. Thank you very much for spending the afternoon with us and sharing your philosophy and ideas for education. I want to remind our attendees that on November 3rd, remember, you're going to be making those, a critical decision, selecting the first West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Trustees for Area, trustee, sorry, for Area 5. I want to thank Cheryl Collier and Myrtle Braxton for assisting us with trustee areas 4 and 5 with your questions. I want to thank all of the candidates who shared this afternoon with us for the forums for trustee area 1, Estella De Paz and Jameela Smith Folds. For area 2, Audrey Kristen, Guadalupe Ayana, and Audra Goldie Williams. For area, trustee area 4, Eanau Burrell, Dimitrio Gonzalez Hoy, and Matthew Trujia. And of course, for area, trustee area 5, Tom Panis, Leslie Reckler, and Carolyn Weisinger. I would be remiss if I didn't thank, let you know, this was our inaugural candidate Zoom forum, and I'm very proud of it. So we should all give ourselves a hand. I want to thank the West, that's right, give ourselves a hand, because I feel good. My first one, I didn't make too many boo-boos. Okay, it was not bad. I want to thank the West Contra Costa Unified School District and the West County League of Women Voters for reaching out to the community to help our voters make an educated decision about who they're going to select for our first trustee board of school board members. And I want to give a special thank you to Bobby Jordan, our communications manager, for navigating me, navigating me through my first-time moderating. Okay, around you, we have our League Women who volunteered their time. We've been here since early this morning. I want to thank Naomi Williams, Myrtle Braxton, Hanovia Callaway, Tyra Wright, whom I'm missing, Anne Muniz, I don't see her on here, and I think one other person I missed. Oh, there she is, our president of the West County League of Women Voters, Cheryl Collier. Cheryl, before we say good night to everyone, do you want to say a few words as our president to kind of wrap up today's forum? You're muted, Cheryl.
I'll be brief. Thank you. I simply want to thank the individuals that are running. All of them were so impressive. Everybody's going to have a very difficult decision to make when it comes to the 3rd of November and their voting. But I appreciate all of you for coming out today. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, the volunteers. And I think it was just fantastic. You did a wonderful job, Linda.
Oh, thank you.
I'm so proud of you. And it is, the League is all about education, if I have to say anything else. And I think that you did a good job today presenting the individuals here so we can make an intelligent decision. Thank you.
Okay. And for Robert Jordan's last job, I've asked him to put on the screen for a few minutes, the trustee area map, so people can see, you know, get an idea what we're talking about who are not aware, and also a link where they can go to, to click on to find out what schools are in which area. Okay, so that's his last job today as our technical director for Zoom webinar. And with that, if I haven't forgotten anything, I don't see anybody waving their hands. So with that, we're going to say good afternoon and enjoy the rest of, oh, I'm sorry, oh, good afternoon, and enjoy the rest of your afternoon. What, I'm sorry, Naomi, you have something to say? You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
I only want to tell the lady that's going to have a birthday, 93rd birthday next, this later on this month, she can wake up now, we're off the air.
That's Myrtle Braxton, will be 93 on October 21st. So Myrtle, we're going to wish you a
September 21st.
Couple weeks, September 21st. Excuse me. September 21st. I love a woman who's not afraid to tell her age, because that shows sophistication and strength of character. So happy 93rd birthday, Myrtle. We're all going to wish you a fantastic birthday. Do we have time to sing? On Zoom, it sounds terrible. So we're going to wait until a little bit later. We're going to wish you a happy birthday.
Thank you. We'll call you.
Okay, Robert's not turning us off yet, but so the map is there. Please make a note of the link. And attendees, thank you for sharing this afternoon with us. I'm very proud of the League and the district's partnership putting this on, and thank the attendees for coming in. I don't know how many people tuned in, but reminder, it's going to be on the district website, webpage, Facebook page, on the district's website, on the League of Women Voters Facebook page. Okay, so with that, I'm going to say good afternoon.
Thank you.
Hey, Linda.
Yes.
It was 51 attendees.
Oh, great, 51. Okay.
Have a good afternoon. You did a
You too, and thank you for Tyra. Thank you. Have a great afternoon.
Hi, Cheryl.
Hi, how are you?